Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Work Session. Today is Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. I'm kind this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Uh, Ms. Houston, are you on?
I am.
Okay, would you please do the roll call for me, please?
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. uh, Manson?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
President Williams.
Present, thank you, Ms. Houston. Uh, we will start with committee business tonight with the work session. I'm going to change the scope of things here. We will start with the Budget and Finance Committee, Resolution 49, 2020. Mr. Allen, you're the chair. I turn it over to you.
Very good. Thank you so much, and I know, Sharnan, um, the link that you attached in the agenda, is that with the updated resolution? Do I need to go back to the email of the one that you sent me there?
No, the one that you have on the clickable agenda should be the current up-to-date amended Resolution 49 for the budget reallocation.
Great, and within the administration, who is speaking on behalf of the administration for the budget reallocations tonight?
I will be presenting tonight.
All right. So I know we had some updated um, things as of today. Let me just, I'm gonna bring up that copy because it has a uh, has a color. Color breakdown, which is easier.
Yeah. Well, I can walk you through everything.
All right, do you want to start with Appendix A then, Mayor?
Yes, I'll start with the first page, and uh, we will uh, discuss uh, uh, A, B, and C, all of which are essentially uh, reimbursements to the general fund for expenditures that were made uh, during the, the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, these are things that range from uh, uh, cleaning supplies for the uh, BMC and for City Hall, to additional postage for some of the mailings that we were done, from tax and licensing, to overtime for fire. Um, but what they have in common, it's $264,000 uh, and, and a little bit more, which, uh, all of which we can now reimburse ourselves um, from uh, a combination of federal uh, funds, CDBG, or other federal grants, uh, or are in fact uh, uh, from FEMA as well. So uh, we could, we could go into greater detail, but it's basically money that we spent from the general fund that we're now able to reimburse ourselves for related to COVID-19.
So all the money coming in, in terms of revenue essentially, is tied to some type of federal program, one way or the other, whether it be CDBG or otherwise?
That is correct.
Okay. I don't have any particular questions on Appendix A with these reimbursements. Um, do any of my colleagues have any uh, questions? If you want, you can raise your hand, because I see all of you.
None whatsoever.
And Wanda, do you have a question?
Uh, just one. Mayor, for the homeless uh, expenses reimbursement, what actually did we do for the homeless?
Yes, I, I believe Chief Enderline is on the line, and uh, he can talk about the Fire Department's uh, outreach, but we, we did quite a few things, and uh, this is reimbursing a total of about $18,000. So Chief, can you talk about uh, what the Fire Department did?
Yes, sir, good, good evening, everyone. So uh, just going down the list of things that, some of the things that we've done for the homeless uh, under the CDBG uh, reimbursement, uh, we put the, early on, we put the toilets out uh, for those to uh, oh, he wants me to start my video, hold on.
Okay.
There we go, okay. Uh, so we put the, we put the toilet, portable toilets out in two locations, uh, at the homeless uh, encampments, one on Front Street and one under the, uh, by the Marlberry Street Bridge. We also put running water in both of those locations, uh, off of fire hydrants, so that they were able to fill water bottles and things like that, to keep fresh water. Um, part of that, we also contracted, you'll see their service first, uh, in the amount of, I think it was around uh, $2,800 a, about a week, and that was to uh, disinfect the shower. So we made an agreement with the uh, YMCA on Front Street to allow us to use their showers for the homeless. Uh, at that point, we'd, we'd been three weeks in, and they hadn't had any showers, because all the shower facilities, Downtown Daily Bread and the other facilities, they closed uh, to everybody. Uh, so we worked a deal that, uh, we used a Y, we paid for the uh, for the disinfectant of, disinfecting of, of those facilities uh, after every shower, uh, gave them somewhere to get their, their clothes laundered. Uh, additionally, and I'm not sure that it's on here, I believe, yeah, the laundry cards are on there, so we uh, worked with Downtown Daily Bread to get the uh, the homeless uh, shower, or I'm sorry, uh, laundry cards uh, through the one uh, laundry company, so that they, they would have a prepaid card that they could take their clothes to, to wash their clothes, if they had clean clothes. Uh, and then there was a bunch of other things, uh, uh, little incendiary things, uh, uh, face masks, uh, batteries. One of the things we ran into uh, with their, uh, some of the electronics that they used was the batteries, uh, the cellphone stuff, uh, to help recharge your cellphones. Uh, obviously sanitizers and things like that, uh, and then uh, and then we, the, the four, if you see the 414 showers for two, $2,070, that was uh, what they typically collect for uh, the homeless shower, so we uh, paid for those for them. That's all reimbursable under the CDBG funding, uh, that, that was put out under the CARES Act from the federal government. Some of the other things that uh, Fire, Police, uh, Public Works, and uh, uh, Building Facilities Maintenance, all that stuff will be submitting to the federal government through FEMA, through the COVID reimbursement, uh, through the, the Stafford Act Declaration. So there's a whole bunch of pots of money out there that we're trying, my goal is, is to make this entire pandemic uh, cost neutral for the city. Uh, and, and looking at the, some of the overtime expenses that we had uh, for Police and Fire specifically, will be also reimbursable. The $144,000, I believe it is, or I'm sorry, $122,786.78 uh, is a reimbursement, that's a FEMA reimbursement. We deployed uh, four of our guys to Philadelphia to help with a uh, COVID testing site down there for about two and a half weeks. Uh, they, they built a, a medical hospital down there and did some other things. That, that's a direct reimbursement that we're expecting in the next, uh, a couple of weeks from FEMA uh, for their overtime and the backfill reimbursement for them. So we have a lot more money coming, it's just a matter, now, now that we have the silos, the money opened up, now we gotta start uh, submitting these reimbursements to get uh, to get the money in.
Thank you, Chief, I, I really, truly, truly am very proud of the fact that you extended those services uh, to the homeless. Quite often councils ask, what are we doing for the homeless population in the city of Harrisburg? And this is a prime example of what we've done. And uh, I wish you much more success, because I know that the COVID's not over as of yet, and you'll be out there for the next four or five weeks. I just received a call, and I just talked to you yesterday regarding the homeless, and I'm certainly looking forward to trying to relocate them from out, under the bridge, because that's not a good uh, area for them to be in. So uh, with your help, if you know of any other locations that we can relocate them, that certainly would be helpful.
You know, the uh, the cool thing is uh, under a pandemic like this, uh, most everything dealing with the public falls under emergency management, and uh, so I'm able to do a lot of things uh, as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city, to make things happen, and so we, under that declaration, we're able to do a lot. We have a lot of things, and, and that got me in the door with some of the folks at the county, uh, with cash and everything, and I think that there's some great things gonna come uh, out of that, uh, some tiny housing initiatives that, uh, that have been put out there uh, by the county, that have been talked about at, at the county, and uh, and a few other things that, that I think are gonna be beneficial to the homeless uh, uh, going forward, and we can talk about those in, in the future.
Okay, fine. I just wanna get them out from that look, relocate, that location that they're in presently, because I understand there's a lot of uh, chaos there uh, every night, and I don't want them, that to be the place where they're gonna have major, you know, problems that, especially when they are in the back of business. Well, thank you, thank you, that's all I needed. That's, that's all my questions, Mr. Allen.
Very good. Mayor, do you want to move on to um, Appendix B?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so uh, turning now to Appendix B, there are six different uh, proposals uh, on, on that, actually, uh, and potentially a seventh, which we can talk about here in a moment. Um, the first one is, is new to uh, is new to everyone, but I wanted to have a discussion here tonight, because uh, this will be the last budget reallocation before the summer recess, and um, if we're gonna do something before the end of the year, I wanted to see if we could um, at least handle the financial side of things. And I'm proposing, um, really actually at, uh, your suggestion, Councilman Allen, and also having spoken to uh, Council President Williams, um, uh, hiring uh, via a contracted uh, uh, personnel line item, uh, a communications liaison that can help with um, communication between the administration and City Council. We do this via a contract at an hourly rate, at least for the remainder of this year, and that contract would have to come before council to be approved. So this is not the contract, uh, and I realize, but this is, since it's the last budget reallocation before the summer break, um, if we're gonna develop a contract and find somebody, uh, I think, uh, I think it's important to uh, to allocate the money. I should say that all uh, uh, six of these proposals are, are being uh, paid for by savings that we've had in the salary and wages and medical line items, due to um, due to basically uh, the hiring freeze and uh, not uh, bringing people on board during the COVID-19 epidemic. So it's a proposal, I think it would uh, bear fruit, and again, this is, this would just authorize there to be, or there would be money there, this would not be the contract, I would still bring you a contract for an individual, which you could um, vote for yea or nay. But this is uh, an attempt to improve the communication, again, between administration and council. I think it's something which a number of you have remarked to me on, and so it's my, my effort to see if we can uh, do that. We have a very lean communications team currently, uh, Moment Body, who uh, is running this uh, meeting, has his hands entirely full, uh, uh, and uh, really can't take on this additional role, but this could be somebody who, especially if uh, the COVID-19 pandemic were, you know, continues and, and, and news uh, cycles are breaking quickly, can help keep everybody in the loop.
Mayor, do you have like a, a job description or something in mind of what you're looking for in somebody for this particular role?
Not yet, but I would provide council with the job description and a proposed contract uh, before anybody was hired. So again, this is, this is merely um, setting aside a little bit of money, since this is our last budget reallocation before the fall, so that we can move ahead uh, to, to Phase Two. We'll get your input on that, and you can weigh in on both the job description and on uh, any potential uh, contract.
Okay. Do you want to move on to the other line items on this appendix before we?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. As I say, there's six. So the, the second one is uh, uh, we, we need an additional $90,000 for uh, the Law Department, due to um, uh, increased legal fees and cost of litigation. Uh, and uh, I'll turn that one over to Neil just briefly to uh, uh, without getting into great detail, explain um, why, why we need additional resources.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the council's aware from some executive sessions late last year and early this year that the city's involved in a number of pieces of complicated litigation. We're at the point now where we have to actually bring on more people externally to do it, uh, to bring in some experts in the cases, which, which are expensive uh, from various fields, depending on what the case is, and we had just already into the year, gone way down into encumbering what was there. Uh, all of the money is coming out of, uh, for our purposes, out of uh, the unpaid salary in the department, because we have been in a hiring freeze. We were down to, I think, three of the eight budgeted positions in our office uh, during the hiring freeze. Um, and so we, all that money is transferring out from there, so the budget for the bureau wasn't going up for the year, it's just being moved over out of salary uh, to these outside, to pay outside firms to continue the litigation. Um, you know, and uh, you are aware there's a, a number of pieces, and if you want a more detailed update, we're happy to do another executive session to bring you up to date on the list. I think the last one I did had a, I think I covered, I think, 10 or eight of the pieces of major litigation that we were in uh, at that time.
What I might actually suggest, because I understand with, not wanting to go into detail in a public session, what some of the legal expenses are, but I, I know, and perhaps it'd be helpful for me if we do this in executive session, where you can give some detail, line item, cost-wise, to what's being allocated for each of the various pending things that um, this would pertain to. Um, that might be helpful, just to have an understanding, because I know we talk about um, what's going on in those sessions, but I, the, the relation of what's going on to the cost, and with the allocate would be very helpful.
Uh, that, we, I'd be happy to do that with the council.
Okay.
All right, well, moving on then to uh, the third, uh, the third one, this one's a little complicated, I will do my best, but uh, as a part of the Mulder Square Development Project, Tri-County uh, Housing uh, develop, uh, demolished a series of structures uh, there in Mulder Square, um, and uh, federal dollars, federal um, uh, HUD monies were used for those demolitions. Um, it has been determined by HUD that that was not eligible for federal uh, funding, and therefore uh, we are going to have to uh, pay for that demolition, not with federal funds, but with general fund resources. So this is sending money to the general fund to basically pay for that demolition, which has already occurred. Um, uh, Mark, I think is on the call, and he can speak a little bit to it. I know there was a long conversation with, with HUD uh, to see if there was a, a way around this, and this gets to uh, an issue of uh, historical environmental clearances that needed to have been done for these properties, but uh, but weren't done. Um, Mark, would you like to add anything to uh, to this?
I think you covered it, but it's, it, it goes uh, really to uh, the disconnect between uh, the federal agencies and local governments, trying to rid themselves of uh, a property that is inherently dangerous, and the fact that the federal regs uh, do not allow uh, for a dispensation when it comes to uh, an environmental review, even if the property is eminently dangerous, subject to a mayor's uh, uh, issuance of an emergency decree. Um, and so um, I think that in uh, the rush to get these properties um, taken care of, because they were dangerous, um, you know, the, the, the staff handled it quickly, um, and uh, from our, from our point of view, and from my discussions that I've had with HUD, appropriately, um, and uh, they just, they just would not bend with regard to the environmental reviews having to be done beforehand. But the problem with that is that they take uh, from anywhere from 60 to 90 days. So when we have an eminently dangerous property going forward, we'll be using um, general fund monies uh, to, in order to, to do that. But uh, it was a long negotiation over a year, that I tried to get them to, to acquiesce to our situation, they would not, and uh, as a result, we had to, we had to pay the monies back.
Right, so uh, these are properties we would have uh, wanted to tear down anyway, uh, we're just gonna end up having to pay for that, rather than the, the federal government, um, but that's, that's uh, that's A2. Shall I just keep going, or do you, do you wanna? Yeah, we'll just go through them all. All right. Uh, the next one is probably uh, easily understood, which is uh, it has to do with the Senators' Fund. Since the Senator, since there is no minor league baseball season, the Senators are unable to pay rent. Um, the contract we have, the Senators uh, provides for uh, an occurrence such as this, which is really beyond anyone's control, um, and does not require them to pay rent when they aren't playing baseball. Uh, as a result, the city still has to make the bond payments on the stadium, and that is gonna require us to transfer about $233,000 into uh, the Senators' Fund to make up the difference, because there was, uh, there's a little bit of money in the fund, but this is, this is what's needed without the rent uh, coming in. Not much to say on that, other than uh, I have spoken to Kevin Culp, and the Senators are looking at potential additional types of events that they could do in the second half of this year, if there's no baseball, you know, anything from concerts to other types of activities, which could allow them to pay some uh, revenue to the city, but uh, with the current climate with COVID-19, it's just difficult to do anything in a stadium. So I think that's just an example of one of these costs that we're having to absorb. All right, and then uh, moving on to number five, uh, there uh, is a request uh, from the Planning Commission, as well as the Planning Bureau, for a final 800, or $8,500 to pay the consultant to do one final continuity review of the comprehensive plan. Um, council's been asking about the schedule for the comprehensive plan, and uh, the Planning Commission finished its initial review of each of the chapters, but determined that they needed to do one final, what they're calling a continuity review, which is basically making sure that the information in Chapter One matches the information in Chapter Three, rather than looking at each of the chapters in isolation. It's only $8,500, um, that will complete the process, and that will allow the Planning Commission in July to have a series of public hearings on the draft, and then get the um, actual comprehensive plan to City Council in the fall, when you guys get back from uh, from your recess. So uh, it's $8,500 more to the consultants for the comprehensive plan. And then uh, uh, finally, on this sheet for Appendix B, uh, there's a request from the Bureau of Communications for just a small $2,000 additional to help with costs associated with some of the events that we've been having at the Band Shell Reservoir Park. As you know, we've had um, uh, a couple of high-profile funerals, and uh, the city has been uh, picking up the cost of the sound, and we uh, we did pledge uh, that we could have perhaps a town hall meeting and other types of events at the Band Shell, so Communications is simply asking for an additional $2,000 to help cover the costs of any events that we would have at the, at the Band Shell. And then um, uh, finally, uh, not on the uh, 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 budget allocation yet, but my understanding is we want to have a conversation about it, is uh, the proposal from Councilwoman uh, Daniels to uh, to take a portion of the money that uh, City Council had allocated uh, from the host fee to the Housing Authority for the Environmental Teen Project, and instead allocated to, uh, my understanding is the uh, Camp Curtain Y um, for a, a new, a new project. Now that will require an agreement, uh, again, with the Y and the city, but from a budgetary standpoint, um, this would be potentially the reallocation that would allow that agreement to then progress.
Okay, prior to that?
I will defer to Councilwoman Daniels about that.
Well, before we talk about that, let me just cover, make sure we have any questions on Appendix B, and then I will turn it over to um, my colleague with that, but um, to my councilmembers, let's actually start with Councilmember Majors, I know you joined the call. Do you have any uh, questions on allocations for Appendix B?
Yeah, sorry, uh, I'm trying to, I got it side by side here. So on Appendix B, uh, all right, uh, second page, yeah, so if we're looking at um, the communications liaison position, um, to me, I think, you know, if we're gonna use resources towards communication for the city, I think, you know, providing some additional assistance to, to Moment and the Communications Department would be a better use of resources than a specific person uh, whose job is to communicate between the administration and council. I think, you know, we should be, all who are public servants should be able to have open lines of communication, and for you, uh, for the administration to be able to uh, you know, keep us in the loop on things, but for me, right now, with COVID, um, I've been continuing to uh, be very much uh, spread in our communities, um, having someone else to help Moment, and the efforts of communication from the city perspective is uh, much more important, if we're gonna be using city dollars to me, than having a specific person whose job it is to communicate between the mayor and council. Um, that's something that uh, we should be able to do, who are all public servants uh, in our, in our city, uh, outside of?
Just real quick, I, because unfortunately, I think you were there at the one meeting we had, one of the things that we had asked for is that we had more of a crisis communication plan in, in place to handle when something happens, so that council was adequately communicated to, in a real-time scenario, so we knew what was going on, because we often have to field the questions first. So it was more of a kind of, um, in times of specific crisis mode, um, or things that were happening, that we'd have something, a, a means of getting information to us, um, rather, more immediate than not. Um, we found when things were going on, particularly in the downtown area, with protests and things along those lines, um, the information exchange was slow for us to be able to respond to constituents as well. So we wanted to kind of increase the speed of, and the accuracy of the communication coming to us, so we knew how to better communicate what was happening from a citywide perspective. So there's a piece of that, but I do, I, I don't disagree with your assessment of being able to back up an overall communications plan within the city, particularly in situations like we're in right now as well.
Right, no, and, and I, I, I agree wholeheartedly, we, wholeheartedly with you about the crisis communications, but again, to me, that is someone in the Communications Department who could, amongst other duties, work on ensuring those crisis communications. If we're having a, I mean, the way it sounds is a third party, so they're gonna be on contract to the city, not necessarily a city employee, is that correct?
Right, it would be a contracted personnel, and it would be a contract that would have to come before, that would come before you for approval. Um, and uh, also, the, the job position would, would come before you for approval at that time. I just wanted to put something in the budget reallocation, so we had the authorization really to begin exploring this while you all are on break, so that we could, we could potentially have something in place. When you get back?
Okay, um, understood, but I think my, I mean, my position still stands, it's, it's, I mean, to me, it's incumbent upon us as leaders to communicate with each other, and to be able to then communicate effectively with the public. To me, that is having someone in the Communications Department. We have a, a great communications manager, but I think we've all talked about having a communications director, which we've had for several years, who could serve in a role as a liaison and a uh, crisis communicator uh, for the city of Harrisburg. Outside of that, looking at the other allocations, understand the need to uh, provide the funding for outside council, um, HUD reimbursement, uh, I guess, yeah, Mark, Mark explained that. So again, the disconnect was us not being sure that we could spend the money that way, and then being told by HUD that it was a, uh, that it was an improper use of the money.
So this happened many, this happened a few years ago, um, and one of the requirements of being able to use CDV dollars to, for demolition, is that you have to do an environmental review. That, that step happened after the buildings were brought down. Um, and we tried probably about three times to submit those ex post facto, but HUD would not uh, agree that um, ex post facto immer, uh, environmental reviews were appropriate.
Okay. All right, um, no further questions at this time on those, I think, yeah, well, the, oh, no, one additional question, I'm sorry. So extra work order on the comp plan, understand that I need to, you know, make sure everything is uh, all aligned. If we provide this money, how much have we, can we get a overall sum on how much we spent on the comp plan over these uh, past few years? This is an additional eight, almost, well, $8,500.
I don't know if Jeffrey's on the line, or if Neil can speak to that.
We, we can get you it, it's, it's, you know, I, I've lost track. Um, overall, we're probably looking in between 240 and 260 over five years. Uh, there was a 190 to 95 for the original, there were two contractors for 10, there was another contract uh, for, under the RFP, and this addition to it. So I would, I would just have to put them all together.
Yeah, yeah, if we, if we could get those, those numbers officially for, before uh, we go on to our next legislative session, that would be helpful. Um, and then uh, additionally, um, so we provide the funding, do we have an anticipated timeline on the finalization of the comp plan after this, if this funding is approved?
Yeah, the schedule that was provided by the consultant, uh, it says that if this is approved, uh, by July 15th, the continuity review will be completed, and then uh, if council is on recess, I believe the Planning Commission is planning to host a couple of meetings uh, uh, in late July and into August to review a couple of meetings in late July and into August to review the plan with the public. And then it will be presented to council when you return in the fall.
Okay, so we're looking at a potential September, let's say September approval from the planning. Then it has to go to council, then we have our series of meetings to then potentially move forward on adopting the plan.
Without putting too much information on the table, we were advised this week that there's a medical issue that came up. I don't know the scope of it, and we don't know how much that's going to impact the country.
Impact the timeline, okay. Okay. All right, well, yeah, hopefully, whatever that issue is, the individuals are going to be able to, you know, be healthy through that. So no additional question at this time, thank you.
Yeah, and Councilman Majors, if I could just say, I am not against a proposal to add a permanent additional position in communications for next year's budget. If we were to do something this year, I think that could be a sort of test in a way that could potentially make us comfortable and give us a clear idea of of what we might want to do. So if we do it in a contracted way for this year on an hourly basis, that'll keep the costs down and then potentially we could, we could change to another full time position for next year. So I I I'm hearing what you're saying. I just, I couldn't think of any other way to get something done sooner rather than later.
Okay, well, I I appreciate that. It's, I guess, maybe another realignment because it was, that position was there. It was taken out by the administration and now you're interested in putting it back in. But I think
Well, in response to, and there were several meetings, which I'm not sure you you were able to attend. But there there was concern by your colleagues that we we needed to improve communication. I'm simply trying to be responsive to council and to to basically say that I'm listening and I'm trying to address what what council is bringing up as a concern.
I I appreciate that. And like I said, it's it's still, I'm not trying to, this is, this is just factual as to what happened with our budget. But I am open to that idea. Let's see what the contract and the scope of work for that individual will look like. And then we'll be able to see how that'll fit for the remainder of the year, potentially into next year. So, thank you.
And and Councilman, and Councilman Majors, let me just also add to that. We did reach a period of time where we, communications between the administration and city council was not working well, was not effective. We were getting information at a later date. Our constituents were asking us questions regarding issues. And we were not able to give them an answer because of the fact that we were not aware of the situation or issue that occurred. So the administration did, in in favor of them, I will say that they did try to disseminate that information to council, but in turn, some of you are working and some of us was at home. And we were not able to communicate with each other as well as we should have been able to do. But I think it is effective that we do have a individual who could make sure that whatever comes between administration and council that we all know at one time and that we're not blindsided by a TV station or a news reporter as to what has occurred in the city of Harrisburg.
Oh, I'm I'm well aware of the the communication issues.
Okay.
This isn't, this wasn't, that is, I'm, I understand us wanting to improve it. We've been asking for improved communication.
Exactly.
Through, not just through COVID, this has been, this was communications, which is why I'm going to continue to mention about having a communications director. So, all right, thank you.
So we're in agreement, thank you very much.
And I'll turn it over, Councilmember Bowers, any questions on appendix B?
I do, thank you. So just to continue with the conversation a little bit more about communications. While yes, we do need a communications director, I think we can all agree to that. But I really think during COVID, especially at the beginning, when it first hit, we saw the lack of communication and transparency between the administration and council. So this is our first step to work to improve the relationship and the lines of communications. I support that. So, and perhaps, we don't know, we have, we have not had any input on the job description. So perhaps this person will have a dual role in crisis communication with the public as well as council. My other questions were regarding the Planning Commission and Planning Bureau's public hearings for the draft of the comprehensive plan. July first is tomorrow, and you noted that they, the, I guess, the anticipated dates are the end of July, early August. Have any more information on definite dates and times? And has this information been communicated with the public?
So all I can tell you is that the consultants, when they put forth this proposal for eight eighty five hundred dollars, said that they thought that the continuity review could be completed by July fifteenth. That's in the schedule of the proposal. Neil's saying something about somebody being sick, so I can't address, I can't address that. I know that the Planning Commission had originally wanted to have public hearings earlier, but it became evident to everyone that we needed to do this final piece of a continuity review just to make sure that the the document was coherent and presentable. Because again, it had been reviewed, I think, chapter by chapter. And this is trying to look at the whole thing comprehensively. It's just a fine, it's not going to take very long. It's a final piece. And then I believe, and we could, we could ask Osha Green, but I believe that the Planning Commission would like to host these towards the end of July and into August. So so that we will get a comprehensive plan to council with enough time to debate it so that it can be adopted in twenty twenty this year, which I think is everyone's goal.
Thank you, I just wanted to be to clarify that because I know that this is something that our residents are very passionate about. Everyone's waiting with great anticipation, so I wouldn't want to rush anything with their input. So I just want to make sure there's ample time for them to mark their calendars to participate.
Ms. Bowers, I'll note, when it comes to council, you you have public hearings as well on the plan itself. So you, as you form your opinions of it, you will also be having a chance and required to have public hearings and meetings under the municipal planning code to review it as a council. So there there will be opportunities as we go on for multiple sessions of input, both to the planning commission and the council.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Councilmember Green.
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
All right, Councilmember Madsen.
Uh, yeah, just touching on the comprehensive plan, maybe this will be brought up during the executive. When we talk about the budget for the comprehensive plan, will that include the litigation fees, given that there were some legal issues with the plan in terms of, I guess, the initial drafter of the the plan and could it, I don't know, have we even gotten a status update on where that's at?
You have not, it's in litigation.
Okay.
Two courts and probably an agency.
So, okay. And then
We could cover an executive session, but this budget has nothing to do with that. There are two different types of budgets.
Okay, all right, just whenever we have the executive session, just like clarity as to what ties into which budget, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Daniels, any questions on appendix B?
They're already asked.
Okay. And last but not least, Council President Williams, any additional questions on appendix B?
Oh, no, I don't have, I don't have any, thank you very much.
The only question I had as we're talking relates back to the Senator's Fund. Mayor, part of the contract, I think, if I heard you correctly, it said that their contract stipulates that if the senators don't play, they don't pay rent on it. Is that, was that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, in the, in this situation, which was beyond their control, they are excused from having to pay the rent. I think that, go ahead, yep.
Well, and then the follow up question I had to that was, are they then the sole authority in terms of what that space is then used for? Like, for instance, if baseball doesn't come back, they mentioned that they might look at some different events. Are they the sole then authority on what might take place or what type of events could take place there? Because I know, I I know for a while soccer was being played out of there. But outside of baseball and or soccer, I don't know that I recall any specific events that would have taken place in the Senator's Stadium.
Yeah, they actually had some that were were planned, including a sort of a monster truck thing and some other things that were going to be new this year, but all got canceled due to the pandemic. They are not the only voice in what can happen at the stadium. The city is is another voice because we are a party to that contract. And if if we have ideas or suggestions, we can certainly work together with the centers to see things like concerts or, you know, other types of activities. The problem is that, of course, in the current climate, there's not a lot of activities to do that. Yeah, so, but to the extent that we are able to have them, then we would split the revenue from them. So we'd split the parking revenue, you'd split, you'd get the amusement tax. There there'd be a way to generate revenue outside of baseball. It's just that we, we don't have any use for a stadium amidst the the pandemic.
Right, and I guess maybe the the reason why I was thinking about that is if we're looking, knowing that this this summer essentially is a bust, that planning for twenty twenty one, I would hope that we could keep that stadium as busy as possible every day that we could possibly keep it busy to draw in revenue for the city. And that's just thinking ahead and and as we're looking at that. Those are all the questions that I had right now on appendix B. Why don't I turn it over to Councilmember Daniels if you want to talk through the the plan for the program and what we might need to do from a budget reallocation standpoint, that would be great.
Thank you. So as you all know, in the budget, we had set aside from the host committee funds a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars with the partnership to have with the partnership with the housing authority, Harrisburg Housing Authority for their environmental team core summer program. Because of COVID, a lot has changed. We aren't able to use them as partners anymore because they're not even allowing use of their facilities to outside entities. They've furloughed a lot of their staff. So we had to reconfigure that summer program while trying to meet some of the needs of the residents when it comes to the sanitation of our parks and public spaces. So we've come up with a kind of a slightly different version of the program, of the summer program. And we partner with with the Y, the Y and Mr. Bragg, who is someone who trains folks in sanitation. So just, I'll just give just the general summary and then I'll pass it on to the folks who can give more detailed information. Initially, the mayor was a little hesitant to use the entire one hundred and twenty five allocation because we go from a hundred, being able to serve a hundred students to twenty four. But unfortunately, a lot of the, you know, their their costs, for example, in the past, the housing authority would pick up the cost of facilities and staffing and all of that. So we, to be CDC compliant, we had to bring the program down to twenty four so that we could break the students up into groups of eight. And then we're having to pay for our own staffing and our own spaces. So since discussing that with him, we were able to bring the the total down to closer to ninety something. And Christine will give the total. But because we are using, doing a lot of virtual, we've cut down a lot of expenses related to space rental because we've got to some, some of the trainings we'll be doing virtually. We've, in in some areas, it was cheaper to buy them laptops than it was to rent the spaces for extra days. So so we've been able to cut down the budget significantly from the one twenty five. So the issue here is really amending the the funds to instead, instead of going from Harrisburg Housing Authority, it would be going to the Y. But I wanted to first have Christina go over the overview of the budget and the components of the program. And then we have Mr. Bragg, who is, will be the provider of one of the components. We have Mr. Jamie, who will be provider of another one of the components. And Ms. Rafika is on board too, so if we have any questions, she's with the EAC and they are the ones who have, well, both Christine and Rafika have oversight over how that money was supposed to be used. So Christine, do you want to go first?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, thank you all for the time this evening to kind of hear us out and listen to what we want to do. As Councilwoman Daniels mentioned, the environmental team core, how we normally run it in partnership with Harrisburg Housing Authority was canceled. When it was originally canceled, we were solidly in the red. And since then, as Councilwoman Daniels has mentioned, the Harrisburg Housing Authority has a policy in place where they do not allow any in-person meetings, not even two people meeting. And I know that when this was initially brought up at last Tuesday's meeting, there was a suggestion to see if we could still put together something and run it through the Harrisburg Housing Authority with them being the fiscal agent. But after discussing it with Mr. Mans, he did have some issues with or some concerns about liability and that it was in conflict with the Harrisburg Housing Authority policy. One thing that he knew that in our budget and as Councilwoman Daniels mentioned, that typically when the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, we just cover the stipends that go to the participants. So there are usually, I guess, last, last summer's program had a hundred participants. And that hundred and twenty five thousand went to pay their stipends directly. And Harrisburg Housing Authority is who picked up the rest of the operational costs. Since they are not partnering with us this summer, some of that money will have to go to the operational costs to make this happen. And if we are going to make this happen. And one of the reasons that some of the operational costs are a little bit more expensive in this time this pandemic is, as you know, there are strict social distancing guidelines, sanitizing guidelines, things in place to keep our participants as safe as possible. After meeting with Mr. Mans last week, and it was a meeting between Councilwoman Daniels, myself and Ms. Mohammed, you know, he knew that we were planning on utilizing the Y, MCA Camp Curtain for space because they are running in-person programs this summer. So they have COVID nineteen mitigation plans and programming in place. And all their staff has been trained. And one thing that Mr. Mans had brought up was why not just for this summer, see if we could use the YMCA Camp Curtain as our fiscal agent to make this program run? What we are thinking is having, as Councilwoman Daniels said, twenty four students divided into three groups of eight. Those groups of eight will never come into contact with each other. We're envisioning a four week long program. The first week would be virtual, they would be going through training. And they would actually receive the training and certification that leads to job skills. And they could potentially take that training and turn that training into careers down the line. But one thing, the other thing about it, making that first week virtual and doing that training and it being a certification program, one thing that we would put in place that they would have to complete that certification at a satisfactory level to be able to continue on to the in-person portions of that program to ensure safety. Some of the other benefits that come with partnering with the Y this summer for this program is, again, as I mentioned, they already have in place a mitigation plan. Their staff has, and again, Mr. Harvey, he is on the call. He can speak to some of these things in a moment. That they, their staff has already been trained. And they also have liability in place and there are liability waivers. And in partnering with us, they would assume that role, which is is huge. And because in the past, when we've done the environmental team core, it has been the Harrisburg Housing Authority that has assumed that liability. And in this case, it would be the Y Camp Curtain who was assuming that liability. And with that first week being virtual, we did not want to have a lack of access to any potential computer being something that kept somebody from being able to participate in the program, which is why that was added to the budget. We also have Mr. Bragg on the, on this call as well. And he could answer any questions about the training and certification program. But it is a great opportunity to really educate our youth and provide them with some really solid job training skills that can benefit them down the line. And we see that as a huge plus. And we see that as a huge plus and benefit. And in addition to some things that we have done in the past with the Environmental Team Corps. Um, we do have four kind of program goals in mind. Uh, the first of which is just educating our youth. As you all have mentioned in the call already, we are not out of this. And so we know that numbers are going up across the country and some areas of Pennsylvania, numbers are going up. And um the demographics of where the numbers are going up are in uh the younger age groups. We are a little bit different from Environmental Team Corps in the past, which targeted thirteen to sixteen-year-olds. We're looking to do sixteen to eighteen-year-olds in this kind of reimagined program for this summer. Um, and it's really important and timely that they're trained now on how to be safe, how to utilize our public spaces in a safe manner. Um, what does it mean to really sanitize in the presence of something like COVID nineteen? Uh, these are really crucial things. And that leads into our second goal is that, in, in this kind of all started out of a brainstorming session, how do we better educate our public? It was something that was brought up uh at the past two Environmental Advisory Council meetings. How do we better educate our public and how, how to be safe? Um, and the youth can then in turn go back and educate um their families and their communities. Again, the job skills and we can also have some of the youth participating in helping to keep our public spaces um clean. Um, the, in the budget, we do have um in there money to reimburse the Y for use of that space. Um, and use of space is not um, not it's a little bit more expensive these days because we can fit you, fewer uh individuals into those spaces. Um, because we have to keep those social distancing uh guidelines in place. Um, also uh between groups, they have to be properly sanitized. Um, and so that adds to some of the costs associated. And again, the changes in costs are coming from those operational costs that we are picking up um in running this program in not having the Harrisburg Housing Authority uh as a partner for this summer.
Christine, since we're talking about the cost, so I know that we'd allocate a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the program typically, and we're reimagining what that is. If I, if I heard correctly, Councilmember Daniels mentioned that the overall cost would be less, but obviously teaching students would be um a fewer number. What is the overall cost that you have anticipated for this program for the summer?
Um, in the budget that we have together right now, it is ninety five thousand dollars approximately. Um, that covers still providing stipends for the students. It costs, it covers the tuition for the certification program. It covers the cost, the extra cost it's going to take to have a coordinators and counselors present. Which, by the way, that's how we ended up with a group of twenty four. We're trying to keep the groups to ten or less, and so eight participants and about two counselors per group. Um, and that allows us to have groups of no more than ten. Um, and so cost to cover those, in the past, Harrisburg Housing Authority has covered those expenses. Um, that it does include some Chromebooks so that they could participate in that initial first week that is virtual. Um, and the last thing about, last things covered are um the supplies of PPE, proper PPE, cleaning supplies and supplies for hand washing stations. And so the in-person component um includes developing uh communication videos that can get pushed out to the public, uh building hand washing and sanitizing stations that can be placed throughout the city at our open spaces. And the last component is helping to go through some of those parks and keep them clean. Um, and go through in the evening after use and, and wipe them down. So those are the, and so we added um into the budget costs for buying supplies for those activities.
Do you have um as part, and the reason I'm asking this just for purposes of this will require an allocation specifically, so I want to make sure we're covering our bases. Do you feel confident that that ninety five thousand dollars is the ceiling? And that more than covers what you will need as far as expenses for the program to be successful?
Absolutely.
Okay, and in the, in, um, I was gonna say, in the interest of time too, I know we have uh Ben and Rafika and
Jamie and it's Mr. Harvey.
Yes, Jamie, I thought, oh, there he is. Uh, everyone's on a different spot as we've moved along, so I'm looking where everyone's faces are. Um, one, if everyone's to kind of show their video, I'm going to open it up for questions from my colleagues um that they can throw out the questions to whoever might be the appropriate one to answer. If Christine or Councilmember Dan, if you want to kind of do round robin on that, uh, we can handle that. And I'm going to start this time with someone who's waving her finger at me, Council President Williams. But go ahead, uh, Wanda.
Uh, welcome to all of you uh who is in attendance this evening. I guess I'm a little surprised behind the fact that um you have changed our environmental team program. And yet and still, we have no documents to uh back that up with. You sat down together in various meetings, you could have uh called for the city council as a whole to bring us in to educate us on what you wanted to do, how you wanted to do it. My understanding in speaking with Mr. Mans is that he would not want to uh do the program this year because of the fact of the COVID nineteen. And he did not want to subject our children to the COVID nineteen virus. Now, if we are as an employee, I mean, as an employer, the city of Harrisburg closed to the public, and then we have the Commonwealth offices closed to the public, and we also have all of our school districts closed. Why are we subjecting our children to interacting with each other when they don't respect social distancing right now? As they're out of school. Uh, if you walk around the streets of Harrisburg, you will see that they are not conducting social distance. Now, I think the program is a good program from what I'm hearing, because I don't have anything in writing. I don't have any specifications about how much stipends will be given to each child. Uh, who's going to pay for, I mean, you've already stated that you want us to pay for the tuition for the program coordinator. How much are you paying that person? And I don't have a individual documentation of how the program is going to go during the six weeks that you wanted to progress over the summer. Now, you indicated that you had job skills after the COVID nineteen program. Are those job skills available, I mean, are those jobs available right now? Or will they, is that for the future? Who, who, I'm sorry, who is sponsoring this certified training? And then also you have liability waivers in place through the YMCA. How much are those liability waivers and what do they cover? So I mean, I have a, a multitude of questions to ask about this program because this is coming to us at the twelfth hour, and we do not like the fact that, well, I personally don't like the fact that we're getting some information at the twelfth hour when it has to do with our youth. That program was supposed to be set up through the environmental uh committee. And then it was supposed to go to Mr. Neff, who in turn would inform Mr. Majors, who is the committee chair for that particular committee. And also Mr. Johnson, who knew nothing about this. So why would you do, why would you sit and plan something for our kids and transfer the allocation of the money to another program when we know nothing about the program? This is something new that we're not, we're just here for the first time. And I think it's, it's amazing that you could come up with all this information and not contact the city council as a whole to have us come in on a Zoom meeting to inform us about it and educate us about it. So I'll stop right there, so everyone, anyone can answer that question for me if you don't mind.
Yes, so I'll go over all of this, um, and answer a few of your questions. So um, as you know, this started out because uh people started to use our playgrounds um without really being careful or thoughtful about how they're using them. And we, as a city, did not have the staffing or the resources to regularly sanitize our parks and playground. Um, and then you had brought up the issue about the playgrounds at one of our meetings um that folks were complaining that they weren't in. So I convened a, a meeting with several stakeholders um about what to do with our playgrounds. And one of the stakeholders was the Environmental Advisor Commission, which has oversight over these host funds. And that was kind of where, when we started to discuss this, Mr. Johnson had participated in discussions very early on. I don't know that the, at that point, it was still a discussion about how to keep our parks and playgrounds uh very safe. Um, because of all of the moving factors, as you know, in that, in the period of that conversation, we went from um stay-at-home to yellow to green phase, right? And so then the need for us to act more quickly became more pressing once the governor um placed off and in green because it meant people were using our public spaces more regularly. Um, you know, so we've been uh trying to share information with folks as, as in a, as in a timely manner as we can. On Friday, um, I sent out the most recent breakdown, which is the ninety five thousand dollar uh breakdown that Christine had uh had assembled Friday. So you should have received that, you should have received that um ninety five thousand dollar budget on Friday. Um, so, you know, and, and as, and as you remember, I mentioned it last week that we were talking about this, we were piecing it together because we need an opportunity, we need something for our students uh to do in the summer. We also need our public spaces to be as clean and as sanitized as we can possibly make it, make them given our limited resources. Um, and there's also a communications component to this. I think, you know, for, for better or worse, the governor used the color green, which I think gives everyone the impression that it means go and you can do. Um, and we need to kind of uh, as, as leaguers kind of kind of remind people that green doesn't mean you could go full force. It just means you can enjoy your spaces, but you do need to take precautions. Um, so that's where, um, you know, so a lot of folks have been involved in these conversations at different times. Um, but given how, you know, how things were changing, they may have participated at different points and at different times. So um, so, you know, that's really kind of the the interestingness or
If you read, if, if, excuse me, if you read the particulars of the EAC committee, that is supposed to follow protocol, that is to go to the chair, uh, Mr. Majors, Councilman Majors and Mr. Johnson and Mr. Neff. And after that, the EAC does not have oversight over the funds. They make suggestions and recommendations to city council or to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Neff and Mr. Majors.
Yeah, and that was the recommendation that
Okay, but that was the recommendation that we received, we are now hearing it for the first time.
Uh, I brought it up last week.
Pardon me, pardon me?
I raised it last week, which is how
You mentioned it, but you did not mention the particulars, okay? And we need to know the particulars, as you always are indicating, and you said it several times, sitting right here on the DS, about how we don't have this information beforehand at the twelfth hour. And now you're doing the same thing and bringing
Received it Friday, which is a lot sooner than
Excuse me, I'm speaking. I allowed you
It's the Sunday of Friday.
Give, give me the same respect, I allowed you to speak, please. You mentioned it last week, but we didn't have anything in front of us or nor do we have anything on a computer uh in our folders. I don't have a problem making sure that our sixteen to eighteen-year-old youth has something to do besides being on the streets. But I think when we talk about this, we're talking about a pandemic that we don't have any particulars in knowledge. We, none of us are medical doctors. So we don't know when it's going to come back, and it's coming back. So we're putting our kids at liability right now. So my understanding, is there, is there any medical person who's involved in this can tell us that having them going on playgrounds, sanitizing playground equipment will not give them more exposure out there?
Well, first of all, they won't be going out until after they've, they've received their certifications, which um, which Mr. Bragg could talk about the, the level. The certifications they receive are higher standard than most of the uh, supposedly higher initially. So um, so they'll be more qualified by the first, by the end of the first week than, than a lot of sanitation workers. Um, you did ask about opportunities, sanitation is going to be one of those areas that will have increased demand as we go forward. And these students will not be entry-level sanitation workers. When they come out, they will be entering at higher grades of employment in commercial spaces, residential spaces, whatever. And they'll, they'll even be able to open their own businesses if they want, if they so choose to. But as you know, because of COVID, sanitation is becoming a much higher in-demand uh position. Um, the other um, the other component is, you know, between Mr. Bragg, the Y and the water facilities, I can almost guarantee you that these students will be safer in this program during the summer than working for any employer in the city. So I don't, so these are sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, we're, we're not uh, we're not certifying thirteen-year-olds to sanitize playgrounds.
Well, what's the, what's the, oh, what's the stipend that you're giving these, and how many weeks would they be involved in this?
It would, the stipend remains the same, uh, one thousand five hundred per participant, and it's over a four-week period. And I agree completely about the, some of the behavior we're seeing with our youth, and they're not social distancing. That's why we think that this, and, and, and we did put this together as quickly as possible. Um, and we think that it is an excellent opportunity to educate our youth about how to be safe. And now is the time to do it. Make sure that they know how to social distance. They know how to behave and what is clean, what is not, what is appropriate behavior and how to keep them um as safe as possible. And we hope that this program will help to do that.
What higher institution is sponsoring this certified training?
Uh, I will let Mr. Bragg speak to it, he will be um providing the training, and so I will let him speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Bragg.
I'm sorry about that, sorry, I just logged in. So what was the question?
What higher institution will be sponsoring these certified training?
Um, I'm working directly, first I want to say thank you for having me, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I work directly with the ISSA, and they are the Worldwide Feeding Institute. Uh, they've been around for almost a hundred years. Uh, they recently, in the last few years, uh, uh, purchased a company called CMI, the Cleaning Management Institute. Uh, and the Cleaning Management Institute's been around for uh over fifty years. They've trained almost a half a million people, uh, almost nine thousand companies worldwide um in proper feeding procedures. Uh, they have uh two basic courses, uh, two courses right now that are uh world-recognized. And that is a custodial uh basic course, which really teaches uh people about proper feeding uh procedures. Uh, and then they have an advanced that, you know, focuses more on floor care and uh, 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 safety items. Uh, both of those trainings together are about uh forty hours combined. Uh, and afterwards, this is an online course that they could take. And it is a very, very detailed testing to achieve the certifications for that. Um, and along with that training, uh, ISSA, another part of their company uh that they recently acquired is called the G-Boc. Um, and the G-Boc is basically a council of scientists. Um, and they develop uh cleaning uh, uh, training certification programs that focus on infectious disease directly. Um, and this new program that they have, the G-Boc certification uh will give uh each individual all of the proper feeding procedures on how to deal with specifically with the COVID. Uh, in my industry, you know, we deal with this on a daily basis. Uh, and right now, you know, we're dealing with something that we can't see. And I really believe uh, you know, the educating our public on exactly what we're facing and how to prepare for ourselves, you know, is invaluable to our kids. Um, you know, I know we spoke a little bit about um, you know, where this could lead to with the kids. Uh, you, you know, having this skill right now, uh, they will be in high demand. Uh, because what's happening in our cleaning industry, as you all know, is, you know, everyone is now more aware. You know, cleaning is way more important, you know, than us coming in and emptying your trash and running the vacuum cleaner. Uh, so this really lets the students really understand uh the value, uh, the seriousness of how important it is to really, you know, take this serious uh and be able to not only protect themselves, but to be able to protect the public. Uh, so yes, everyone that I do business with uh has been through this certification program. Um, every single person, every client we've done business with, uh, we've been able to flash this badge. Uh, and we get, you know, immediate recognition and knowledge that, you know, this program is, you know, recognized as being one of the best that are out there.
Are you saying ISSA is a worldwide cleaning company?
Association, yes.
Okay, association. Are they uh familiar with the COVID virus and how to handle that? Have they gave any specifications of how you do, go about doing that?
Yes, ma'am, and, and that's what the G-Boc course actually really focused Yes, ma'am, and and that's what the G-Boc course actually really focuses on, the COVID um directly. Uh but they are who every major company right now is really relying on. Uh they do deal directly with the CDC. Uh I've, you know, had a longstanding relationship. We're partners on many things uh with, and uh, you know, within regards to the training. But they are the worldwide industry leaders uh on proper cleaning sanit- sanitations and certifications out there.
Okay, because I'm looking at their website right now, and I, it doesn't tell me about, so we're doing only four weeks. What's the required time for a certification?
So it's about for the advance is, we we like to say it's about twenty five hours. Uh then they take a six module course on that uh which is in depth. Uh then the advance is about twenty four, twenty five hours also. Uh and then the G-Boc certification, which couples on that, goes on top of that, is probably another four hours of certification. So we've been able to teach the program to people sometimes over a weekend, but it's really in depth, you know. So it really compares to the student. Um if it was me, I would definitely be probably using the whole uh fifty hours. Uh but uh there's been people that have been able to, you know, get it done in, you know, a day or two.
Okay, well, I'm certainly looking at the website and everything you're saying. I'm following you as you're you're speaking. And I'm looking at the SIMS certification program, so.
Yes.
Um to that, to that extent, you know, you are, I I agree. So are the coordinators and counselors, are they also going to be trained along with the students?
One of them, one of them will, which is why we budgeted for twenty five on the certifications.
I I also would like to have Mister Harvey uh speak to some of this, because his uh as if we do move forward with this um and we go through the the YMCA camp curtain, um he can speak to the level of training that his staff has received as they will be the ones um helping us carry out this.
Okay, Mister Harvey.
Sounds good. How's everyone doing tonight?
We're good.
Thanks, thanks for having me, as always. Um you know, from the time this COVID stuff hit, you know, my staff, honestly, we we really, we really try to stay ahead of everything. Um just from, you know, a technology standpoint, you know, from an innovation standpoint, from, you know, it was just time to pivot. So we've been working, you know, around the clock, putting together these plans. You know, we had a chance to, you know, work with our national organization, our national YMCA. There was a lot of things that came down through there. We just have a lot of resources, you know, and help to be able to really pivot through this time really, really fast. So if you, if you didn't get a chance to look at, you know, pretty much all of our documentations from like videos, from how the parents are coming in to how the kids are coming in, you know, how we're taking temperatures, you know, we have videos out there, we have all types of COVID policies put in place. You know, and honestly, sitting here, you know, I I'm the protector of our kids, you know, I'm the protector of the uptown community. You know, I buried my sister last Saturday, so I understand, you know, the seriousness of, you know, this COVID situation. And if I didn't think that we could socially distance, you know, our kids and actually pull off this program, I would not put us into that situation. But from from what I'm seeing and from what, you know, my staff have been able to produce in the training that has come down, you know, from, you know, the national YMCA or just from, you know, our insurance company, um we've added this stuff out with, you know, all types of, all types of consultants. And uh, you know, we're 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 ready to go, you know. Um we're still currently running our county programs right now with the county court system. We're still getting kids referred. So we've been doing that online for, you know, the last, you know, three months or so. This is all the stuff that we've we've been doing. So to be able to give, you know, some some kids, you know, another opportunity. I can't find maintenance and janitorial folks right now, you know, for the Y. You know, so I got people working, you know, around the clock. So I mean, for these kids to be able to get these certifications um and be able to possibly even come and work for us, you know, or the Boys and Girls Club, Talking to Mark, you know, they they need folks. Everybody needs people. Um and just knowing the job that, you know, a Ben could, you know, teach to our kids is is, you know, you know, it it'll be a remarkable thing for them to be able to get this certification. I called Ben and his company, and they came in and they did the Y soon as soon as the Y was done. You know, the YMCA, we ordered our own foggers. We had our own foggers on site, you know, within within weeks. So um I just think it's a good opportunity, you know, for the kids. You know, I would, I would hate to see something like this go to waste um or not even a waste or necessary to be held. Um but, you know, we're we're ready to go, like, and I wouldn't say that, like, and put anybody at risk if if I didn't think we could pull it off.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm 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 glad that we found a company that we could, you know, entity that we can utilize the services of our children for the summer. I don't want to see them on the street, and certainly it's a good program. I was really dismayed by the fact that we could not coordinate with the Harrisburg Housing Authority. How are you selecting these individuals and where where the selections come from? Um from all over Harrisburg, or how do you, how do you go about selecting those twenty four individuals?
The one requirement will be that they're Harrisburg residents, so that will be.
And mandatory. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mister Harvey.
Oh, and I was just going to say, I mean, we're going to start with our alternative program. You know, like I said, we have a ton of City of Harrisburg youth, you know, through our, through our county, you know, juvenile um probation program with, you know.
Right.
You know, so we'll start there, because we already have a relationship with those kids. We can make sure that they're logging on and getting online and doing, you know, the things that they're supposed to do. Already have a relationship with them, already have a relationship with the parents and, you know, their family. Um and they'll be used to the online stuff, because that's what we've been doing the entire time.
Okay.
And the Housing Authority had offered to also um go back to the folks who participated in the previous programs to invite them, because they'll be older now too, so they'll be in that sixteen year.
But that's what I was going to recommend, because that program was selected for the fact that, you know, those who live in that area. Because of um through the Harrisburg, as we were partnering with the Harrisburg Housing Authority to address that for some of the kids who could not find suitable employment in the summer. So I'm glad that we're partnering with the uh Uptown YMCA, but I also want to make sure that the young people from the Harrisburg Housing Authority have an opportunity to be a part of that program.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And thank you, Mister Harvey, for that information.
Thank you.
So all the questions I have, Ben.
All right, I'll turn it over. Let's uh, sorry, looking at my grid here. Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you. Um I have one question and one comment. First, I'll start with my comment. Uh thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, um Harvey, and the members of the EAC and anyone else that's um been involved in the restructuring of this program um for something for our kids to do. Um as we've all said repeatedly throughout this conversation, it's an excellent program. Um and I think it's great that you all have found a way to adapt it uh for this summer, given COVID nineteen. My only question is, um what are the dates of the program? I know it's four weeks, but what are the the dates?
That is something that um we hadn't set in stone uh pending approval uh from all of this. Uh but what we were thinking is that the ETC typically runs um from about the first or second weekend of July until mid-August. And so we wanted to stick within that same timeframe. Um also, it's going to rely a little bit on Mister Harvey and uh what the Y can do to get us, get us in on their schedule. Um but what we were thinking was at least sticking within that timeframe, and so maybe starting at mid to end of July um so that we can finish about the same time that the ETC would have finished, should uh the program have run as usual.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. Uh Councilmember Majors.
Oh, yeah, sorry, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Yeah, okay, so uh as President Williams pointed out, I I sort of got this information sort of late, and it definitely should have came through, uh but that's neither here nor there, so it's. So the selection process, it's, we we're we're talking about twenty four students. We've, I've heard the conversation about making sure that they're City of Harrisburg residents, but then I'm also hearing um that that. All right, let me make sure. That are the, are the, the students already chosen that want to enter into this program? Or is it going to be an open process and a selection needs to be made? Because it it's sort of implied that, you know, if we're going to, you know, certain groups off the 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 start, that this program could be filled, and other kids throughout the city may not have an option to be able to even be considered for these positions. So I know we're looking at Harrisburg residents. Is, are there any other stipulations being put in place for the selection? Because, you know, we're we're used to having a large, a much more robust program. Um this is very limited, so I want to make sure that like how, how, make sure that that candidate selection is uh as fair of a process we can make it, because we are very limited.
Uh so I I bet I can start. I don't know, Mister Harvey, if you had um some comments um to make as well. Uh I think that um in the past, uh when we have done the Environmental Teen Corps, it has been Harrisburg Housing Authority who has um set the the application process and the review process and picking um uh who gets to participate and not. I think what we would like to do, since we are working with the Y this year, is um as Mister Harvey mentioned, start with a core group of kids that they serve, but also reach out. Um we do have some more limited spots um as compared to, like, as as you mentioned, we did a hundred participants last summer, and now we're down to twenty four. Um but I know that in the past, uh the way that we've done Environmental Teen Corps is that students who have, were, sorry, that's from teaching at Harrisburg University, uh all youth are students. Um so the um what they have done is that they've given priority to past participants of Environmental Teen Corps. Um I know that that is one of the ways that they set up the selection process. And so we would like to give opportunities to us, to our our youth that are uh have participated in the past in Environmental Teen Corps and are in that appropriate age range for this program, the sixteen to eighteen. Um and so that would be something that we would work with Mister Mans to reach out to um to those. But I don't know, uh Mister Harvey, if you have anything additional to add.
No, not really. I agree. Um it was pretty much the same thing with camp this year. You know, we typically take almost two hundred kids, and we have thirty now, sitting at desks, you know, eight feet away from each other, and we only have five kids in a group, you know, we don't even have eight. So um I can understand, you know, that process, and we'll, and you know, we'll definitely market, you know, to the Allison Hill and, you know, to the uptown neighborhood. Um I mean, our marketing department does really good job with, you know, getting stuff out there to the community.
Are there restrictions you would like to see?
Uh, so, so again, you know, understanding we're very limited. I'm just trying to make sure that people have opportunities in terms of the uh, and I apologize if I missed it. Uh the beginning date should this go through would be what they, so I'm try, I'm trying to get at how long of a application period, process period would there be for people to make app, to to submit their application and participate?
We're going to aim for about um July fifteen, what the get, that might, the Monday around July fifteen, um we're going to aim for that.
As a start date.
As a start date, so that would give us a a couple of weeks, um which is on par with uh with what has been done in the past for the Environmental Teen Corps. They usually um put out the notice for applicants at the end of the school year, so towards the end of June. Um and they uh do their selection and start by about the second week of July.
Okay, so.
I think uh because of the short, I think it could be great to have council members like help really advertise that that opening, because we have, it will be a narrow window.
Okay, and then again, in terms of engaging them with uh devices in order to be able to complete their first training, are we just providing twenty four devices to twenty four people? Are we trying to understand if they have any communication, you know, computer capability at their home? You know, some have internet, so, you know, are we trying to work with them to be able to get, you know, hooked up with Comcast, which is still providing, you know, internet essentials to 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 folks, so.
That's going to be part of the application process, so we'll know. And so that part of the budget could end up being a little bit less or a little bit more, um depending on how the answer is. Because we're not going to disqualify someone for not being able, for not currently having the resources to participate. Um but we do have to figure that out.
And we did budget in just in case, worst case scenario, every single uh selected participant needs to have access to um a Chromebook. We did budget for that. Uh but that will be a question that is asked. Um and so not necessarily everyone will need one, but we did want to budget just so that was not an obstacle in participating in the program.
Okay, great. And then upon completion of the training program offered through Mister Bragg, what exactly is, so are they going to be cleaning and sanitizing at the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club? Or is this parks and playgrounds, you know, or, I mean, as the President Williams pointed about liability concerns, what exactly? So I go through my training, what exactly is the job for me post this training and certification?
We were envisioning it that they could, um and this was a conversation that we had had in kind of the initial brainstorming session um with uh Mister Baker, but we were envisioning that they could help out in some of the open spaces and parks in the city. Um and I know that in that initial call, um that was, a question was brought up whether or not it would be a liability issue to have uh them out there and cleaning. Um but that was the way we initially envisioned this.
Okay, uh then I guess either to the mayor and or Neil, are, would there be any liability and or union issues with us paying individuals to help maintain our parks and playgrounds?
Yes and yes. So um I'm not saying they're not, not, not fixable, but yes and yes. The problem is the tough timeline. Um to take you back in time, HHA's program came about with an MOU in twenty fourteen. I believe a second one in twenty one, twenty fifteen. That's how you ended up with your annual report every year, that they became obligated to come back to council, because there was basically a contract between us and them, and you guys set the parameters with them, and they had some very plain obligations, because it's an audible function, audit-able function. So I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, I think that's the Y of YMCA in this role, if I'm hearing that correctly right now. Um and we would have to have a contract in place that doesn't exist yet. We would have to have insurances in place. We probably have to raise it to the union. I don't know that they have a big deal with it, but I just don't know. Um because we have other summer help that comes in, um and you guys will deal with the certifications that have to be there uh for sixteen to eighteen year old minors being supervised, so everyone has to have their. And that was part of the HHA agreement. Everybody, everyone had to have their clearances, they had to be current. There, and that's where the liabilities come up, because it's not a city program which changes the insurance. It's the other entities program, and we're basically giving a grant to that program to run it. That's the structure we came up with. It sounds like that could be the same structure. It's just there's a lot of steps between here and there um to do that.
Okay, all right, and and then to that point, are we able to clear those hurdles within the timeline provided? I, you know, this isn't, these are aren't questions as me trying to tear it down. These are questions, because if we're going to do this, we want to make sure it's done correctly, and there won't be any liability that, you know, put back on on the city for, you know, having our 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 youth out there. I know there's other cities that are doing uh, have several different kind of programs that they're trying to be able to engage folks with, trying to continue to maintain the cleanliness of their parks. So, you know, there's park ambassador programs, um you know, trying to encourage our our public to uh take some ownership and 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 help us maintain our parks through the summer, and particularly with COVID, so, you know, encouraging social distancing, et cetera, et cetera, even providing um equipment to, you know, ambassadors, similar to how Capital Region Water has their ambassador program. So that's where I'm trying to, I'm just, I'm asking questions, because I'm, I'm out of concern, not out of not trying to, want to make sure our youth have um potential op, job opportunities.
It it's very hard to give you a definitive way we can get that done in that timeframe, because essentially you're voting next Tuesday. You know, I mean, so, and a contract doesn't exist yet. It is possible for the council to do a resolution to basically move this program over to the Y, which isn't written yet, but we, that we could do. And it's possible then to put that as part of the budget reallocation, which you have worked, so it's just an amendment to to the bill already in front of you, is why we're talking about it now. But essentially, you would have to authorize then for essentially the mayor's office, which is basically what you do anyway. which is basically what you do anyway, is to is to go ahead and make the contract consistent with this and their other obligations. Making it take off on July fifteenth is a big lift. I just that's just I'm just reality because we would actually need the insurance certifications in our hand. We would need something about the clearances because we really would be back to where we were in twenty fourteen, which by the way started with just whatever thirty kids or fifty kids, it was a much so we do have the framework to do it, you know, and it's really just transferring a few things.
And and I think that with the in July fifteenth was, as I said, is best case scenario are the date that we saw in mind to stay within those timeframes of the Environmental Teen Corps. But if we have to and push this back to to allow these things to happen, I think we have we have some room to do that, particularly with it being a four week program as opposed to a six week program. And so that gives us a little bit more wiggle room. And I can I can let Mr. Harvey speak to clearances, but I but I know that his staff have to have those clearances in order to do their job as well.
Right, no one's definitely coming on site, the YMCA with no clearances. We're not even taking volunteers right now. The parents can't come in the building.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll defer any additional questions I have at this time since, you know, we are, it's already after seven, so.
I have one question, you know, with Mr. Major said, how did this how does this enact with our program for the youth? Are we having the youth program for the summer for the city of Harrisburg?
The mayor would have to speak to that. I I don't know.
Mayor, are you continuing the program, the summer program with our youth?
No, the city is not. The only thing that the city is doing is we're doing a food distribution program for breakfast and lunches in four of our parks and playgrounds. We we canceled our our summer programming. We may also do some movie nights and a couple other group initiatives, but we we scaled back due to the pandemic.
And that's that's what I'm concerned about. If everyone else is is disengaging their program, why are we pushing to do this program when the COVID cases are are accelerating again?
And part of that and and another reason why we went with the Y because they are still carrying forward with their summer programming. And we really, the focus of this is to teach them about safety, about slowing that transmission. We're seeing in our communities that that is not happening. They're not getting the message. And our hope is that by reaching out to our youth and giving them the proper training that they then can go back and take that information to their families, to their communities. And part of this, that's why we added into this, one of the activities that we'll have them doing is creating those educational videos. Have them create videos, what does it look like to use an open space or parks in a safe manner? What does proper social distancing look like? What is the use of face mask and proper PPE? We're including that in the programming and having them create those videos and create those videos in a way that may be more effective in reaching their peers than than we could if we tried to put together that communication piece. And and we think that that is going to be critical as we see the cases pick back up again is that we're reaching out now so that we can get them to to do what they need to do safely and properly.
Can I just say something quick? Welcome, everybody. I'm just been listening and all and nobody's trying to hurt anybody through this whole process. What is happening right now because we're not doing anything, our playgrounds are contaminant vectors for the covert disease. They're not being cleaned and sanitized at all. Our communities and our our families and our children are going to the playgrounds. They don't know that they're supposed to take proper PPE with them and they're supposed to sanitize them as well as use them. Nobody's doing anything. Our playgrounds are not shut down, they're not taped off, none of that. So all we're trying to do is to help the city, our residents in a process. All we're trying to do is to train our children in another way. These are new jobs that are coming across. So we're just trying to be that that piece to just help that nobody's trying to hurt anybody, trying to take nothing away from anybody, trying to do anything in a negative way. I did ask that, all of y'all know, because y'all know me. I try to keep all of y'all in the loop on everything. This just came together listening to different conversations. So I don't want to, you know, us to sit here feeling that somebody's trying to do something or something, that is not the case. I am concerned. I live next to a playground. I cringe every day seeing children and babies on that playground, knowing that our city is not doing proper covert disinfecting. This is just giving our children an opportunity that we can look at. If it works, then this is something we can look at on a bigger scale. And at the end of the day, when they get certified, I really hope the city of Harrisburg hires our youth. Because I'm I want to know if our city buildings are being cleaned. Who's sanitizing our buildings? These are public spaces. These are my spaces. If we can hire our own children when we get done to to spread this out, I think this will be great. But I just wanted to say that this is this is innocent peace and all we're trying to do is to help, I think.
Well, I'm Africa. This is President, I'm not saying that we're against anything. And regardless of how you feel if it's innocent or not, it's not innocent. And I'll say that because it was done in an untimely manner and it was not vetted through this council. You don't wait to the twelfth hour to present something when you do in fact that, excuse me, when the count when your committee, EAC committee, might have known two or three weeks ago what they wanted to present to council. So we don't have any sufficient documentation in front of us. We have to rely on what we, you know, receive today. So it's an untimely manner and it's untimely program. We just have to make sure that we cover all of them. And when you talk about not sanitizing anything or they're not sanitizing the equipment, well, people are not even wearing masks. They're protesting against masks, okay? And it's it's not myself or you because I'm protected. I wear a mask. But to educate them to try to get them to do that when the governor has made an executive order and they don't follow it. So we don't, we're not trying to go against this program. I think it's an excellent excellent program and I think it would be beneficial to all of our youths. I just want to make sure that what we're doing and we're taking this money that would be useful. And that now you're saying that they're going to have a certification. When are those jobs going to be available? Because right now I know of no COVID nineteen jobs associated with this virus.
Well, we have a shortage in parks and recs for people to sanitize our playgrounds.
Well, and and additionally, and I saw Mr. Bragg's hand go up, but I have I have family members that are in the cleaning industry. There are plenty of businesses that are adhering to guidelines and are looking for individuals to ensure that they have the proper certifications in place to be able to do cleaning of their buildings in order for them to be able to adhere to guidelines that are going on that due to COVID nineteen. So again, the the questions I have aren't out of they're either just trying to, you know, get some better understanding as to what we're going to be doing. And then additionally, the the question that I still haven't necessarily had answered, so if the kids are supposed to, so are we, do we have a is there a a certain guideline or a certain protocol in place or timing for them to be able to do the cleaning of the parks? Like, how is that coordination going? What is that coordination going to look like with parks and rec? And and making sure that that word gets out because what would also seem to be mentioned by, excuse me, by Ms. Proctor was about doing some marketing, having the kids do some marketing to the community to let them know about adhering to guidelines, social distancing, wearing that, proper sanitation, which all sounds great. But I'm trying to understand, so if we're going to have them helping to clean with that protocol and procedure looks like, how like? Because to me, it's everything sounds great. I'm just unclear on how process wise in four weeks that's going to work. You know, one week of training and then three weeks of cleaning, then what?
So the way that we're doing it is, and 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 President Williams, I do apologize for getting this to you at the twelfth hour and and not contacting everybody that perhaps should have been contacted. This really came together super fast and I I do apologize for that. Councilman Majors, to answer your question, the way that we're going to do this this program is and twenty four was was chosen very specifically because it's three groups of eight. And so the first, so the first week, one set of eight students is going to be working entirely on that communication piece. While one set of students is working on the hand sanitizing hand washing washing statement stations. And that came from a conversation with Mr. Baker about the the difficulty in finding places to purchase hand washing stations and hand sanitizing stations, that it's hard to find those now because there is such a demand. And so we're going to have our our kids as part of the program build those out. And then one group will be cleaning the parks and then each week they'll rotate through. So all kids get to go through all components of that for the three weeks.
Okay, like I said, no, I'm sorry. I'll stop all my questions and let any additional members have what.
And and we we and the reason why we don't have, you guys don't have all the documentations is that this has been, we've been rushing to put this together to get this in front of you guys in time. And I know last week that Councilwoman Daniels approached the subject. And since between last Tuesday and this Tuesday, we've been working really hard to get this all together. But but we will be putting together documentations and spelling and spelling out everything. It's just that that we have been working really quickly in the past week to try to get this all together.
And and I just wanted to mention when you, Councilwoman Majors, Councilman Majors, when you mentioned about the the rotation, we probably won't clean all of the playgrounds. We know that there's a food program that's going on with the city. We wasn't sure if staff was coming back to staff those playgrounds. But again, maybe we can follow Kevin's program with the food program, since those playgrounds are going to be active, those should be the ones that we should look at to maintain and stay clean. If we do do other ones, tape them off. We have playgrounds that we need to just tape off. Once they're done, clean them, you know, shut them down. We wanted to look at focus on the playgrounds that are heavily active. We can come up with a little list as we do that for you, that we just wanted, you know, help with the maintaining. The education and information can be ongoing. COVID is going to be here with us for a while. Everybody in this room knows that we're going to be dealing with this for a minute. So that information can continue on. I seen children play on our go to our public parks and spaces in fall and even in winter. If it's not too cold, you're outside enjoying our spaces. So this can be a continuum. It doesn't just have to, you know, to to stop.
I just want to jump in. We have, we are well into our second hour for tonight and we saw people who have not had an opportunity to ask a question. So I want to go to Councilmember Mattson if any questions on this.
Yeah, real quick, in regards to the equipment, Chrome Chromebooks were mentioned. And I guess my question is, who is purchasing the Chromebooks and then who would own the Chromebooks after the program?
As far as purchasing, we're looking at this to kind of work the if the YMCA is our kind of fiscal agent in this and in we turn this over, treat it kind of like a grant and it gets over, the money goes over the Y, then they would be the entity to actually purchase the Chromebooks. And who they go to, that has been a topic of discussion that we kind of hit at the end, I think, beginning yesterday. And we are open to suggestions, but we would like to have those students be able to keep them at the end of the program. That's what our preference would be, but we are open to to suggestions.
When when you land on your decision, can you let us know? And then that way we kind of kept in loop on that.
What what's your, what is your preference?
My preference?
Or or council's preference, or maybe you can all email me your preference.
Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, I would maybe keep them in house as long as they're relevant for the youth council. Potentially for projects or workshops or something like that. But I'm I'm open to suggestions as well.
And and that would have to be a contract term, whichever one it's going to be, would be one of the items. Because again, it's going to be subject to audit. You might want to do the easiest thing, frankly. And the easiest is probably for them to keep them as opposed to start tracking them down from a bunch of sixteen and seventeen year old kids who lose their computers in my house. So the just a suggestion, but that should be in a contract. Each of those terms should be in there. So that that's clear whose responsibility is what at the end of the day.
And that that information needs to be sent to us before Tuesday.
Well, I'm going to speak to that in a minute, actually, with the closing questions I have too, but let me just, Dave, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, this is just for Mr. Bragg. It was just a term that I thought was interesting. In regards to the ISSH, GBI was mentioned. What's a what's a GBI?
It's a global board of advisors made up of scientists that get together and they talk about best practices on how to deal with infectious disease. So it's an independent council. They get together and put together recommendations, create certifications and programs. They actually just released a new one, GBI, GBI Star, that is more for facilities to become compliant on how to deal with, you know, the COVID in your facility, whether it's schools, office buildings. So these are people that actually dedicate their life on the scientific side that are able to gather the right information and give it to people that are able to put it into programs that are able to teach other people on how to follow the proper policies and procedures.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess one of the marketing piece in the skills, I'm not very familiar with this industry. I guess the question I have is industries are so fast changing anymore with technology. How relevant do we think a lot of the skills will be in the next few years in terms of the cleaning and skill sets gained while cleaning playgrounds and whatnot?
Um, and and listen, that's a great question. So I'm going to tell you this. I've been doing this business for twenty years. And I've never seen the industry so primed and ready to have new companies be able to step up to the challenge right now. You know, we've always been dealing with industry that, you know, people look at it and are looking for the cheapest price. Now, what's happened is, you know, just for instance, it seems me and some of the companies just here locally, just in a month, were able to employ over a hundred people and able to pay them twenty five dollars an hour for disinfection services. So what I'm telling you right now is for these kids to go through this program, I could hire them. Like, they, that right now is like, there's so many job opportunities right now. I've, we've done more business since COVID happens than we've ever done. And finding qualified people is, you know, the biggest thing out of this. So that's what there are so many opportunities these kids could have from having this certification, you know? Maybe perhaps one day they think about that, maybe they want to start their own business. And what stops them from doing that? Because now they're certified to be able to perform these services. So I, you know, the there's I with the kids in the training, I just it's just all positive because they come out with that information. And I'm telling you, folks, is going through this program, once you go through it, and it's like a college course, you really have a lot more understanding how important this industry is. So I think that this industry is primed for tremendous growth. It's now an opportunity that, you know, just with us, we've been able to take where we are paying people anywhere from ten dollars an hour for routine office cleaning, that now with people with the right certifications, we're able to get them up into the twelve, thirteen, fifteen dollars. For those folks that are certified and have the GBI course and stuff, because what's going to happen is when we start to go back to work, there's going to be, there's going to be cases that happen in buildings. And what's going to happen, these buildings are going to shut down and then somebody's going to have to come in and clean that. So, you know, so the people can get back to work. So the growth of the industry, this industry has already been growing very rapidly as office space grows. So there, you know, having the kids have this certification, folks, is, I'll tell you what, truly invaluable for our youth.
Great, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Oh, and also just in closing, I appreciate everyone's hard work and putting this together for our youth.
No, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. I'll try to keep them brief. So just to be clear, we don't have a copy of like what the day to day plan is going to be when working with the students, do we?
No, we are still, that is coming together as of yesterday and in today, today.
Okay, do we know how many hours a day the students will be working?
We're looking at about a four hour day.
Also, what equipment is going to be being used? I know when working with youth, a lot of times it's a liability when using certain machines if they're under the age of eighteen. And then also one being hired, a lot of times when using chemicals, they want to be eighteen. So I want to make for sure we're preparing them for something they'll be able to do in the workforce.
I'm going to let Mr. Bragg answer that since he's going to be.
Yes, that, yeah, thank you. So that's exactly what the certification program teaches the youth and everybody that comes through it, those exact things. Like I said, this company's been around for almost a hundred years. Like I said, this, this company's been around for almost 100 years. This is what they do on a daily basis, you know? And, and right now they're one of the biggest assets that, you know, all businesses have right now. And, and, you know, like I said, is everyone that works with us has all of these proper certifications? And there's no way we could expect them to go out there into, you know, the field and not have the proper training. So yes, ma'am, to answer your question, that's exactly what the certification program covers.
And that's part of the reason why we can't have them, if they don't pass, why we can't have them continue.
Okay. My question was more so, is there a liability with certain equipment being used? Like if it's a fogger or a certain chemicals, is it a liability with the students being under 18?
Well, I, I don't, I think after we discuss this is really the biggest piece of equipment that we're going to be using outside is going to be pump sprayers. There's, you know, a lot of these foggers need plugins or battery activated. But we realized since we're not going to really be inside worrying about paperwork, you know, we can do this with pump sprayers. You know, it's a simple process of cleaning the machines down, spraying the application, let it sit for its dwell time and, and removing it. So as for that, no, we're talking about basically big spray bottles is the biggest piece of equipment that they're going to need.
Okay. How long is the actual certification part of the program?
All together, it's about 40, 45 hours, you know? One is, you know, like I said, that's how much the content is. So some people can read faster and some people can take tests faster. So it's really up to the each individual. We, we've been able to, you know, do a big training program when we were doing it in-house to do a long weekend and get it done in a long weekend. So it really depends on the individual. But if this is something that they're focusing on each day, I, I don't see why, you know, three or four days, they wouldn't be able to complete it a week tops.
Okay. If it's about 40 hours, we'll say if it's four hours a day, about 10 days, about two work weeks in order to complete the training?
And so to clarify, the four hours a day will be for the in-person part post-training. The very first virtual week would be a full eight-hour day in doing the virtual.
Yeah.
So the training itself is just virtual?
Correct. The very first week of the program is entirely virtual. It's only the, after they pass that certification that we move on to the in-person pieces.
Okay, so the certification itself is all virtual?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then they would do the in-person part, which would be the actual sanitation of the playgrounds?
Yes, that would be, one group would be working on the playgrounds while one group is building out the hand washing stations, while another group is working on creating their videos for, to pushing out for the public about, about how do we enjoy our outdoor spaces safely?
Okay. What's the hand washing stations? Do we know what, what will be done with them afterwards? Are they going to be like put in place at the parks or?
Yeah, that was a conversation that we had started with Mr. Baker. The idea is that they would be put in at parks and open public spaces in the city.
All right. So looking at the, the little breakdown that Councilwoman Daniels sent out, it looks like it's accounting for about six mentors and one program coordinator. Have these people already been chosen? If not, what's the application process? Because obviously that's going to take time to make sure they have their clearance and then get, get hired on or however that works.
I'm going to turn to Mr. Harvey for that, but what we're going to use, if we're doing this partnership with the Y, they are going to be able to supply those individuals so that they are their staff that have already been through the training on how to, to interact with the kids in a safe manner. They've already been through the COVID programming training and they already have their security clearances in place. But I'll let Mr. Harvey speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, we would definitely want to use our current YMCA staff. Also, you know, give us the opportunity to be able to call back some of our staff and bring them on-site, you know, for this program. We did, you know, release probably, probably over, over 30 staff. We were staffed at probably about 15 to 20 right now. So to be able to bring, you know, some of those folks back and, you know, put them back to work, you know, with our youth would, would, you know, really help out the organization. But also the people, for sure.
All right. I think that's about the only questions I have. I, I do want to say I appreciate you guys for coming up with this plan. I, I like the idea. I'd like to know a little more about the day-to-day activities and the, the plan in that sense, but I like the idea of it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to close out the discussion on this, just two points. One, obviously, which I know may be hard to remember, the point of discussion of this was a budget allocation for this program to move forward. We will need that by way of an allocation to come down. So I don't know if, Shemane, if you're working with Neil or whomever to make sure that we know what needs to happen from an actual allocation. I wrote down the budget is $95,000. So we'll need that in a formal allocation to be a part of this consideration. The only thing else that I threw out there is based on the discussion, obviously, there's other considerations that must need, need to be determined. One, if there's an MOU required, what does that look like? Is that something council has to approve? Other, other additional things council might have to approve outside of the budget reallocation before this program came off the ground. So I think those are some things that probably need to be determined and figured out very soon, knowing full well that, you know, what the council calendar looks like over the next week or so. So with that, I will close out the discussion on the Budget and Finance Committee and turn that back over to Council President.
Yeah. Councilman Alec, could I just add two quick points? Just listening to the conversation, I feel sort of compelled. They're both budgetary related. So the first question I have, and I, I don't have the answer, I'm just raising it as a question, is, is this actually a proper use of host fee funds? I will note that the Environmental Advisory Council and that program was developed with a, a core sort of educational component that matched the host fee. And this is a little different. This seems almost like a workforce training initiative and a sort of COVID initiative. Both very much needed, but I'm not sure it's the same thing. And if we're talking about a budget reallocation for the host fee, maybe we should, maybe this should be being funded out of the, the general fund as opposed to the host fee. And then the second question is, just a reminder to council and to the EAC that we were proposing funding the $125,000 out of fund balance from the host fee, not out of the annual operating expense. So this was going to be the final year. We were taking our accrued savings and fund balance, putting them towards this program. And a large portion of the year was supposed to be spent developing partnerships that could help pay for this program moving forward. So if we do switch gears and go with this, it's going to jeopardize having a host fee money available for the environmental teen corps next year. And we just have to take those two budgetary considerations into, into account when having, when having this discussion. And I hadn't heard either mentioned, so I wanted to add them to the points tonight.
And thank you for raising that because we do want to make sure that what's not used stays with the environmental teen corps budget just goes over to next year.
Right. That would only be $30,000. And if, if, you know, if you spend 95 of the 125, that would only leave us with 30, which would mean we wouldn't have enough host fee money to, to have a teen corps next year, or at least it would have to be much different. So since it was paid by fund balance, not recurring revenues, again, this was going to be a, a final year of funding the EAC. This is where I think Chris Nave's perspective might have been helpful in bringing sort of him into the loop conversationally a little bit. Because it, it talks about, it's basically how we're spending the host fee funds, what they're for, and how we're developing an annual budget.
He was.
I wanted, I wanted just to address something that, Mayor, I just wanted to address something that you had mentioned. This is an environmental issue. I don't know how we can separate out a, a disease that's not environmental when we're dealing with a lot of PPE that everyone's using, that's all in the streets, it's creating trash. It should be separated out when it's being taken away. I also serve on the EJAB board dealing with the environmental advisory board on a state level. This is an environmental issue and we all need to take it that way. Yes, it's an health issue, but it crosses over the line. So the question that the state is asking on environmental part, where is all this PPE going? Where's all the trash going? That should be separated out. It needs to be burned into the incinerator, which is, is, then is still causing our asthma rates to go back up. It's impacting our air. So it's a vicious circle that COVID has put us in. So I just want to let everybody know, we are not stepping out of the bounds of this not being an environmental issue. It is definitely an environmental issue. We talk about this every week on a state level with Dr. Levine and the governor. So I just want to bring that around to us full circle. We're not doing nothing out of the ordinary. And I know that there's has been discussion about trying, I don't know, we're using the word defining teen corps or what we're going to do. But we need to keep that component in place and try to keep it going to help our children. The goal of this was to educate them and train them into environmental careers. So yes, COVID-19 is an environmental issue. I just wanted to share that.
I want to conclude this on this because we have a lengthy agenda still to get to. So I will turn it back over to Council President Williams on the agenda.
Would you have an administration committee? I have to run the bathroom.
Sure. Do you, which do we do administration?
Yes, administration committee.
Okay. Yep, I can do that. So moving forward to the administration committee, up for discussion, we have resolution 40 of 2020. Shereen, would you mind reading that into record, please?
Resolution 40 of 2020 is a resolution appointing Mr. Leland Nelson to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC.
Thank you. And I saw that Leland was on the call earlier. Leland, are you still with us?
I did receive a message from Leland. This is a moment that he had a low, low amount of power on the phone due to a transformer that went out. So his phone may have died.
Okay, got you. Well, let me just go through, second, bring up the actual resolution. Leland would be appointed to the Environmental Advisory Council. Does any council members have some specific questions to this background or experience that we can perhaps reach out to them independently on to make sure that we cover? You can raise your hands if you want to have a question or something, or if you want to send a question, maybe we can handle it that way. Councilmember Bowers?
Don't have a question, and I'm not saying anything that I haven't already spoken to Mr. Nelson about. Given his experience and his background, I think that he would be, his talents, time and expertise would be better utilized for the city's audit committee over the Environmental Advisory Council. We know that that committee lacks diversity. The men have said it themselves, that they are seeking members of color with his expertise. And I think he would definitely be there.
Thank you. And you said you've had conversations with him about that, Councilmember Bowers?
I, I don't know. I, I'm not clear if this is a strong interest. And I, and I said, if so, that's great, that's fine. But I did want to share that there were vacancies available, I believe, two on the audit committee.
Okay, yeah, and that is true. Does anyone else have any specific question that we'd want to follow up with Mr. Nelson on? You can raise your hand and I'll, go ahead, Councilmember Mattson.
Uh, no, I didn't have any specific question. I just think it'd be good for the record if he just introduced himself, gave a little bit of his background for the public.
Yeah, he unfortunately dropped off.
No, I know, I know, I know. I mean, if, at some point we get him to say something.
And hey, and this is, so I think even if we decide to move forward with this, having him be able to be available at the next council session prior to suspend the rules, so we can potentially ask him any additional questions. And as he mentioned in his comments, so I'm on PPL's outage map, there was an outage not too far from his property. A transformer was blown. And I also know, just because I have another screen up that our, I think, our police chief, I mean, our fire chief mayor dropped off because there's an active fire crew in that area. So.
Okay. Then what I'll do is I will, we'll table this and put this file on the agenda for the legislative session. And we'll invite Mr. Leland back on. Wanted just to catch you up, Leland had to drop off the call. There was a power outage.
Okay.
In his area. So we just might want to have him maybe show up to the legislative session just to do an introduction to himself at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We can move on to your other resolution if you want to take it over from here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolution 48 of 2020, Mr. Houston, would you please read that into record, please?
Resolution 48 of 2020 is the resolution appointing Mr. Richard Martinez to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, are you there?
Hi there, everybody. Yes, I am.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Give you a couple minutes to give an overview about yourself, why you're interested in being part of the committee?
Yes, of course. Be happy to. There it is. Nice. Yeah, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, I'm sorry, I said committee, I meant environmental advisory council. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. So yeah, so a little bit about myself. I'm originally from Idaho. I grew up in the rural area of Idaho. And I, actually, the reason that I even came to Pennsylvania is after serving in the Peace Corps as an environmental educator, I met a young woman from Harrisburg, and so that's why I'm here. So, but yeah, I'm very passionate about environmental issues. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental studies and I have a minor in geospatial analysis. I also have a biology certification for seven through 12 education and also social studies, seven through 12 education. I'm working right now on a fish and aquaculture health graduate certificate. So I work for Commonwealth Charter Academy. I was doing my certification program. I was teaching aquaponics this year. So that's why I'm doing the fish and aquaculture to specialize a little bit more in that field, which is very interesting. So that's kind of my education background. I do live here in the city of Harrisburg. I live in the uptown area off of Seventh and Division. So I bought a little town home there and I'm kind of here for the long haul. I'm interested in doing, you know, community development as I did in the Peace Corps. I think that doing that kind of work domestically is extremely important. It's a big passion of mine as well. And I just want to do everything that I can to be able to support and better Harrisburg as a community.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I had an opportunity to look over your resume and I'm pretty impressed with all the nod you have with aquaculture and fish health and also an environmental issue in the climate change and our school-based gardens. So I'm, you know, you're exceptional individual. The only question I had is what could you bring to the environmental council? And what would you like to see changed in that council?
In terms of changing the council, I'm not entirely sure what I could do quite yet. I think that a lot of my time, at least in the beginning, is learning from my peers. I'm sure that the council as a whole has a whole wealth of knowledge and I'm very happy to be able to learn about as, as time goes on. What I bring to the table is, I think, a different perspective. My parents were migrant workers. I toiled in the fields as a child and I am bilingual. I think that the bilingual community here are mainly Puerto Rican folks, but they should also be included into a lot of these issues in terms of environmental problems and what they can do in terms of participating in any aspect possible. And also just being a current educator in high school, being able to make those connections, whether it's through the Harrisburg School District or through the charter schools, just doing our absolute best to be able to, you know, reach out and do more programming to be able to bridge the gaps between the education that is lacking in terms of environmental issues.
And looking at your resume, I see you speak three different languages. What an exceptional young man. And also starting to be a wonderful asset to that advisory council. I just want to thank you. I have no additional questions, but I want to thank you for your willingness to give up your time and to be a part of the Environmental Advisory Council. I'll go now to my council members. Mr. Alec, do you have any questions? Mr. Martinez?
I don't have any questions. I had a chance to review your resume. Thank you for your willingness to be part of the, the commission. You'll be a welcome addition to it for sure. I don't have any questions. Um, I had a chance to review your resume. Thank you for your willingness to be part of the, uh, uh, the commission. Uh, you'll be a welcome addition to it for sure.
My pleasure.
Ms. Daniels?
Um, I had, uh, trouble opening the resume, but, um, but my colleagues asked other questions. Where in Idaho are you from?
Uh, I grew up in Twin Falls, Idaho, um, actually south of even Twin Falls. I grew up in the middle of the desert, Hollister.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a kind of vandal.
Really? Oh, up north. Yeah, yeah. You, a lot more trees up there.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fascinated to see another, uh, Idaho. I'm not an Idahoan, but that someone from Idaho is here, so.
What did you study out there? What were, what were you doing in?
Law school. That was my last year in law school. And I did, I worked for the Nespurs tribe and that my represented migrant workers for immigration.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
Mr. Ms. Ms. Bowers? Ms. Bowers?
Questions? Thank you for, uh, your interest. Um, I I think you'll be a perfect fit for the council and I look forward to, um, sharing what you have to offer. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Mr. Majors?
Sorry, yes. Um, well, first of all, good evening, uh, Mr. Martinez. Thank you for your, uh, willingness to want to serve on the E A C. As a few members noted, you know, that you, you know, bilingual, um, and you've also done work with, um, L H A C. So one of the questions that I have is, you know, how can, you know, do you have any plans or any thoughts on trying to improve outreach in terms of environmental issues facing our city Harrisburg to members of our, uh, our Latinx community?
Yes, of course. Um, and I think that that's, like, as I mentioned, uh, one of the best things that I do have to offer is, really, whatever we do in English, I can reproduce it in Spanish. So that's even if it is the programming that the E A C is doing right now with this program, if we happen to bring on a, you know, participant that doesn't speak English and only speaks Spanish, well, we can facilitate and make the changes to be able to accommodate to that participant, which is something that I think is very important in terms of any other programming that we develop in the future. Having that in mind and being able to provide those accommodations would be something important and something that I would advocate for.
Okay, no, thank you. That's, that's great. Um, and since I'm going through your resume, I think it feels like you're a, a, a perfect fit for the E A C. So look forward to being able to have you serve, uh, our community in our capacity. No other additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Ms. Green?
Thank you, President Williams. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. I think you'll be a great asset to this, uh, committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Mattson?
Uh, not a lot of questions for me, just a statement and wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve. Uh, you have an impressive resume. And in another life, I worked for the Department of Agriculture and did a bunch of research into aquaponics. So, uh,
Oh, is that right?
Yes, yeah, I did. So it's a really fascinating, um, technology and love to see it implemented in our school districts. I think there's a whole bunch of stuff kids could learn from, and I know they do it in Stilton. So any ideas there and how we can coordinate with the school district? I would like to hear them.
Mr. Mattson? Well, thank you, Mr. Martinez. Are you done, Mr. Mattson? I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. We certainly will put this on the agenda for a vote on, uh, next Tuesday. And I thank you again for your willingness to serve on behalf of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Moving on to, uh, Public Works Committee. Ms. Houston, would you read resolution fifty six of two thousand twenty into record, please?
Resolution fifty six of two thousand twenty is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg to ratify and confirm the provisions of Executive Order Number Three of twenty twenty that provides for an application for impacted businesses for a one-time credit on commercial solid waste disposal and collection accounts issued in conformity with the Merrill Declaration of Public Health COVID nineteen disaster emergency.
I now would turn the meeting over to our Public Chairs Committee, Mayor Chairman, Mr. Majors.
Thank you, President Williams. Uh, and I will, uh, I guess then now defer to the mayor to provide a brief explanation of why this change is needed.
Uh, thank you, Council Majors. Yes, I I I will be brief. Uh, this is, uh, one of a series of measures that we have taken by executive order and we're asking council to affirm, uh, in response to the, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. It would, uh, allow, uh, uh, licensed, uh, commercial account, uh, holders in the city of Harrisburg that were affected negatively by Governor Wolf's, uh, uh, stay-at-home order and, uh, disaster declaration to apply for what would be a credit for up to two months of, uh, sanitation services that would then be, uh, applied over the last four months of the year, September, October, November, and December. We're looking to send a, a letter to all of the potentially eligible account holders in Harrisburg. Hopefully this week with, uh, with your approval, um, uh, asking them to, uh, fill out a, a, a simple, um, a simple survey that, uh, verifies that they were impacted by the pandemic, that they are, uh, a licensed, uh, uh, business, uh, within the city of Harrisburg and, um, and applying for, uh, for this credit. There'll be a deadline of August first to apply for the credit, and then, um, we will apply it moving forward. So this is not a backward-looking credit. It's a forward-looking thing. So it should help some of these businesses that are struggling to get back on their feet. Maybe they've, uh, were in green and they're starting up again, but they could still use a little bit, uh, of relief. So potentially for the last four months of the year, those businesses would have essentially, uh, their refuse bill cut in half by the applying of this, this credit. Council may want to know what the potential exposure is to the city if, uh, if every uh, account holder that's eligible, uh, were to apply and, uh, uh, Rosemary Nye, who's our, uh, billing specialist in the Public Works Department, did a exhaustive analysis of all the account holders and, uh, came up with a, uh, uh, a, a potential exposure of about sixty thousand dollars, uh, a month, and we're going to offer a two-month credit. So it'd be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we would be crediting if everybody were to apply. There is one important, uh, qualification to this program, which I haven't mentioned, uh, which is that you had to be current in your sanitation account as of the beginning of the pandemic. Yeah, if you were not current, uh, or you're behind in your sanitation bills, you would not qualify for this program. So it's really just for businesses that were current, were paying their bills, um, uh, and by no fault of their own, uh, suffered um, a shutdown or a drastic reduction in business due to COVID nineteen and now would like, uh, a little bit of an incentive and help to get back on their feet. That's the, um, that's the gist of the program, and I'm happy to, uh, answer other questions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, now I'll start with, uh, questions from members of council. So I'm just looking at my, uh, screen here. I'll start with council. Woman Daniels, do you have any questions? No questions? Okay. All right. Uh, Councilwoman Bowers, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Alec?
I apologize you said this. I was reading through it as you were talking too. So, uh, the one-time credit is something for a future bill within the, like, a quarter to come, but has to happen in twenty twenty. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. Uh, so, um, we're, what we would do is we would apply it to the last four bills of the year. So, uh, since we're offering a essentially a two-month credit, we would spread it out over the last four bills, September, October, November, December, so that each of those four bills would essentially be cut in half, uh, if you, if you qualified. Uh, so it's, uh, it's, it's unlike other programs, which are sort of once and done. This is something that I think some of these struggling businesses can look forward to as they're moving forward and trying, as I say, to get back, back on their feet.
Got you. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Green, any questions?
Uh, I don't really have any questions on this. Um, one kind of comment slash question is, uh, what are we doing for the residents? I see this for the businesses. Do we have anything on, on the the works for residents?
Well, uh, just keep in mind when it comes to sanitation, um, uh, residents have actually been producing more sanitation than ever before. Whereas, uh, commercial accounts, the, the amount of sanitation was drastically reduced. So, um, one thing that we're doing for residents is that we've been accepting all of that additional trash and tonnage uh, at no additional charge. And Aaron Johnson and his team have been going sort of above and beyond as people have been home, generating a lot of trash to take that. Uh, whereas businesses, uh, they continued sort of paying the same rate, but then didn't generate the trash. So from a financial standpoint, there's actually been a savings. Uh, we talked about the worst-case, uh, scenario if, uh, in terms of, uh, if everyone applied for the credit and got it, there's actually been a savings because we've been taking less commercial tonnage to the incinerator while at the same time we've been taking more residential trash to the incinerator. So that's, that's how I would answer that question.
Completely understood. Um, and it doesn't have to be something for the residents in the sense of a credit, but like, are we extending, um, not charging late fees if they are, uh, do fall behind on their bills or anything like that?
Oh, yeah. Yes, that has been the case. Yes.
Okay, do we plan on extending that? Is it, when does it end?
Uh, that had the, uh, we had a moratorium on late fees, uh, during the, the course of the disaster declaration. So anyone who got behind didn't get further behind. That, uh, that currently, uh, is over. But also remember that the, uh, uh, you know, the, the average, uh, residential sanitation bill is, is, is not an overwhelming bill. A lot of these commercial accounts, you know, they're paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars, uh, a month. So it is, uh, it's, it's much harder, I think, for, uh, to make those ends meet than it is for the average resident.
All right. Thanks. So those are the only questions I had.
Thank you.
Councilman Madison, any questions?
No questions for me. Thank you.
All right. President Williams, do you have any questions?
Just one. Mayor, what's the maximum amount of credit that we are going to, uh, apply to these accounts?
Right. Uh, so the maximum amount of credit, if everyone that we think is eligible, meaning every business, uh, commercial account that wasn't behind in their trash bills when COVID hit would be about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Some of which can be paid, uh, just out of the savings and tipping fees that we've had by not, by not having actually taken that trash. Because remember, again, these businesses didn't generate trash. So while on the same time, we're giving them a credit in the future, we also did have to pay to haul their trash during the pandemic.
But I'm saying to each business that applies makes an effort.
Oh.
What is the maximum amount that we are providing for them?
So, uh, if you, if you look at it, well, it depends on what the, how much trash that, you know, the business is paying. The businesses, uh, many of them, I I'm looking at a list right now that was prepared by, uh, Rosemary and I in our, our billing. Many of them are paying, you know, uh, a hundred to two hundred dollars a month, but there are some businesses that, uh, actually pay a couple thousand dollars a month that were, uh, that were shut down. So your credit is basically, uh, two months of what you paid, uh, whether it was a hundred or a thousand, spread out over, over four months. So essentially, you still have to keep paying your bill, but you'd have to pay half of what you would normally pay for the last four months of the year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Majors.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and for me, question that I do have is, uh, so how does this, how does the, the businesses being shut down impact our, our put-or-pay obligations to, uh, Lakswama with the tonnage that we need to provide in order so that, you know, the city isn't on the hook for anything additional?
Yeah, thank you for that question. We've been carefully monitoring it and we are on track to meet our put-or-pay. Actually, uh, last year we exceeded the put-or-pay to a degree that we actually got a little bit of a rebate back at the end. So we had a, we had a fair, um, a fair bit of a cushion. But we get a report every month from Lakswama that tells us where we are compared to, um, the year previously and compared to the budgeted amounts. And we're still on track to, to meet our put-or-pay. And that is due largely to the fact that, as I referenced before, that actually, actually residential trash has increased pretty dramatically. Um, if you speak to Aaron Johnson or Dave West, we, we've, we've taken more trash than we've ever taken during this pandemic. The only instances where it's decreased has been in these commercial accounts, and that's why we're trying to target them for what I think is, is a fair and helpful credit.
Okay, yeah, no, absolutely. And, you know, having spoken with both Aaron and Dave regarding, uh, the work that our public works, uh, crew has been doing, which has been, you know, exceptional and like I said, and, you know, want to appreciate them for all the efforts that they've put forward to continue to work through, uh, this pandemic and provide a much-needed service to the residents of Harrisburg. Uh, additionally, so I know now that we're also, uh, contracted to do steel and, or is still in contemplating anything similar to this, or is, are they, uh, a part of the, the, are those commercial businesses a part of this as well?
They are not a part of this. This is for Harrisburg, uh, residents only, which is my, our jurisdiction. Theoretically, uh, uh, the Steelton Borough Council could entertain something and we would work with them, uh, if that's something that they wanted to do. But we haven't been approached by steel. This is only applying to Harrisburg.
Okay, no, no problem. I just wanted this, since we are also picking up the trap, just wanted to have that question out there. Uh, are there any additional questions or comments from any of the members of council? All right, seeing none, hearing none, I'd ask that, uh, this be placed on the, uh, next legislative agenda for Harrisburg City Council. And I will defer, turn it back over to President Williams.
Well, thank you, Mr. Majors. Uh, Mr. Alec, are you willing to put your, um, Budget and Finance Committee Resolution forty-nine on the agenda to, for a vote? Pardon me?
I thought I hit the button. I, I did not. Um, the only thing I would add that we need something formal for the, um, allocation for the educational program in the form of an amendment for the, uh, for the budget reallocation. But yes, the budget reallocation can appear on the agenda for the legislative session.
Thank you, Mr. Alec.
Ahead of the legislative session, there's a work session Tuesday. So you'll have a committee meeting to, to cover it before the legislative session.
Right. And honestly, from the amendment perspective for the, the budget, we just need to see it on the, you know, where it's coming out of, where it's going into from that point, that just says that.
You need that, and you'll need a resolution because it's a new program.
Exactly, because it's not a, not a program that we approved. It certainly needs to be, uh, justified too.
Right, but that's a separate.
Our office, it all comes together. That's what we have. We're bringing all that for Tuesday.
And how do, and we need to be very careful how we word this particular funding.
Madam President, we're always very careful in how we.
Well, we need to be extra careful because we're no longer, you know, this is taxpayers' money. Moving on to, uh, Public Safety Committee. Ms. Houston, please read Bill Eight, two thousand twenty into record.
Bill Eight of two thousand twenty is an ordinance amending Part Five of the Administrative Code under Chapter Two dash five hundred, adding there to Chapter Two dash five fifteen to establish a citizens' law enforcement advisory committee.
I now will turn it over to our Public Safety Chair, Ms. Green.
Thank you, President Williams.
You're welcome.
Um, if we could just get a, a little bit of a summary from now about the, the bill, and then I'll move on to, um, some questions from my colleagues since I helped in crafting this. So just get a summary from now.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Green. Uh, we had met with yourself on this piece of legislation I had and have done quite a bit of research. This is a revisit of an issue that, as far back as I looked in the Law Bureau's logs, I could find a record probably going back, uh, three solicitors ago. At different times, this was talked about, uh, by the council. The, uh, we've, I provided you and the mayor with a national survey that was recently done in two thousand twenty of these bodies all over the country, put out by, um, court, uh, I can't remember the name of the law school, but it was, uh, it's one of the more reputable places in the country that had a professor put together the study and a survey of them throughout the country, just for the largest one hundred cities. We are somewhere down around five hundred in terms of size of cities in the country, somewhere way down the list. But this is an advisory committee, uh, which is what it started out as a discussion with, um, four years ago, uh, under the predecessor for the Public Safety Committee. Advisory committees are expressly authorized, uh, as bodies under the optional third-class city charter law that, uh, we operate under in the city of Harrisburg. So that was the tool that we used to authorize the creation of this committee as we did. You have an audit committee that's advisory. Actually, the planning commissioner's advisory. You have a number that are advisory. What that means is they make a recommendation, just like Harv become the city council, and it's really the councils of powers that are then vested in the advisory board technically. I structured this based on our discussions as a mixed initial appointment of council and the mayor. I structured this based on our discussions as a mixed initial appointment of council and the mayor, which was your request. So there's four original appointments by council. There's three by the mayor. And thereafter, the, it requires that the chair make a recommendation to the mayor when there is a vacancy to, that if the, if the panel has a recommendation for who's in the city to replace them. The initial panel is designed, so there are seven police districts in the city that the coordination would be one member from each of those districts would be on the panel. So the whole city is represented in terms of it. That came from a discussion with yourself and the, and the police commissioner on how to sort of break this out. We've, we've tried to take into account a lot of the input from around many places of putting this together. It is essentially a reporting and review board in few, in the sense of using the public information that is out there and basically becoming a better reporter to the council and to the public on what the police records mean. There is a lot of information out there that I think is hard to get through if, if you don't have someone sort of really translating what it is. That's our experience. We deal with the police bureau all the time. And they have a, a number of public records that are hard to get your hand around in terms of understanding their place in, in policing. So the idea was, this was an initial step on how to get the city residents more involved in the details of policing and sort of framing the question. The, it is an advisory board in that, and I, and I know that there's been many public comments that from both the city and outside the city, that they would like it to have more authority. I had looked at that question pretty carefully. And the authority that is being talked about is essentially judicial authority. The council doesn't have judicial authority to delegate of its own to a third party, to another body, nor does the mayor. You have the authority to issue subpoenas, but only administrative subpoenas. But you have no judicial authority to enforce subpoenas. And if we're going to have the discussion, you'd have it frankly, about what's the power that's really there under state law in Pennsylvania. So, so the body was basically there to create a report and gather it and give it to council and then start doing it on a routine basis to be a liaison to concerns brought to the city, to host public meetings to do that. And basically start that more consistent public dialogue that goes out there. I don't think there is a clear, what's the other end of this except improving the information on policing to get a better handle on what it is. There are a number of restrictions on what you can do with records the police have. There's, there's a criminal history record, so you can't have a lot of those. They're, they're not allowed to release them as, as, as a police agency. On the IA stuff, there is a union contract is under Act 111, which is enforceable on individual employment rights. Each police officer has a property interest in their job, which is why this has been sort of driven by unions across the country. And this council's ability is limited in, from under state law. A lot of these reforms will, I think, eventually be state law reforms that come. They're really, they have to change the authority that local governments have in order to be more responsive on these, on the big picture. I mean, that, that, those are the realities. So that, that's why it's framed the way it is, to be an advisory board, to collect information and report back. And hopefully that those dialogues and those reports would lead to additional questions. I know you and I talked about a series of reform legislations and this and the use of force report were the first two. And it was, information was going to inform what comes from here, is my understanding of the charge I have from you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thanks, Neil. Just a question or two before I move on to my colleagues. As you mentioned, a lot of residents have really been asking for the board, the advisory committee to have subpoena powers. When you say administrative subpoenas, could you give a little more of an explanation like what that means or?
Sure. The word subpoena only appears twice in the Pennsylvania Constitution. And it appears there both times with the judiciary. It's a judicial power, not an executive branch power, not a legislative power. You will see agencies have subpoenas and they can use the subpoenas to control who they regulate, but they cannot do enforcement for third parties or outside parties who they do not regulate. So administrative subpoena, for example, at the Human Relations Commission in Pennsylvania, they can issue subpoena for reports. They can issue subpoenas for testimony. They cannot enforce those subpoenas by themselves. They have to open a new judicial action in a court every time in the county where the witness or the documents are, if they want to enforce those. Because, because the court has the judicial enforcement power, not the agency, because they are, they are part of the executive branch. You have essentially the same thing here. So subpoenas, if they were issued, based on at least the comments I've seen, would not be have enforcement powers. You would then have the city applying to the courts, because they're an advisory board against council, to enforce against the city. That, that would be where you would be. And, and that's got its own complexities to it, as you can imagine. So I understand the demand for the subpoenas. I understand the, the true desire to see more in terms of records. I believe there's a much more in terms of what's available in the public record, from my understanding, than people ask for to see. There is a vast amount of information in the public record. And our office is the right to know office and we get requests all the time. But there are some things that are plainly outside the public. Administrative subpoena would probably get you not much more than you would get in the public record. A judicial subpoena would be what would get you things that are closed off to the public record. That's, that, that's the difference between the two. And that can only come from a court order. And you have to initiate a new action in a court just to have that enforcement of a subpoena. So the request could be made, just like it can now. And if, and if the answer is no, where there's no answer, you would still end up having to go back to court.
All right. Another question, are there any boards or commissions currently in the city that have subpoena powers?
So the Tax Appeal Board has subpoena powers, the Zoning Board does. So I said, they could issue a subpoena. But enforcing them, it still comes down that you have to go to court to enforce them. They can't compel or discipline or do anything to do that. An example of a state agency equivalent is, for example, the Public Utility Commission can issue subpoenas. But if you're a utility, they, legislature gave them the ability to find utilities. So if the utility doesn't do it, they have actually a mechanism to punish them, you know, to compel where, where that is there because it was given in state law. So we, so subpoenas can be issued, but, but we would have to go to court on any of them to do it. You can always press very hard for voluntary compliance. It's what you do. But, but the reality is, it would take a matter of people going to court on each one of them. And I would tell you, under Act 111, I would expect the union would be saying no to individual subpoenas about individual officers and individual records and individual statements. I think you should anticipate that's because that's been the way it is across the country for a very, very long time.
All right. I have a couple more questions, but, and being cognizant of the time, I'm going to start with some of my council members. So I will start all the way to my far right, if we were sitting on the desk. So Councilman Daniels, Councilman Daniels, excuse me.
So I was busy with the youth program. Always I haven't had as much time to look at the ordinance. I'd like some time to do it. Will there be, how many more public hearings will there be on the, on the resolution?
I, I plan on having at least two or three town hall style, public comment sections, sessions. So they won't be official hearings, but it'll be like public comment sessions with the public. So.
Okay. I'll try to get questions and comments by the end of this week.
Okay. Thanks. So then moving on will be Councilman Majors.
Thank you, Council, Wall Chair Green. I'm going to have a, a series of questions, but first I'd like to start off. I thank everybody for, for their time. I know this has been a long meeting and the work that's been done. But if we're looking at law enforcement advisory committee for the city of Harrisburg, it would be nice to have the chief of the, the commissioner here for this meeting. I recognize that, you know, Neil and the mayor are here. I appreciate your participation. But a lot of the, the questions and input that, you know, I've heard from the community, some of those questions would, we would like to actually have the chief here. So hopefully, as we continue with a series of meetings that the commissioner and some of his senior staff could be available for these, for these meetings. Additionally, I have, and Chair Green knows this because I think a lot of us have been in communication with this, hoping that in the future, there'll be some ample space for either in-person public comment or some sort of mechanism where we can allow public comment via Zoom on these matters. Because this is an issue that is facing, that all of our residents have a right to have their input in and their input heard. Because just like us, we are, our police are paid by the, the residents and the taxpayers in the city of Harrisburg. So want to make sure their voices are heard through this. So when it comes to, to this advisory committee, four years ago, we, we, we looked at this and with the work of some outside groups, we were trying to push towards a, a review board versus an advisory committee. And, you know, words mean things when, in, in legislation and the impact that they can have. So I was looking and with the help of some other council members and former colleagues, I know that, I guess, some of what is being focused on is subpoena power. But I think a lot of what the residents want is the ability to investigate incidences of police misconduct and having that ability to investigate and look into some of those complaints. And reading through this, I, this is advisory, so I'm trying to see. And I couldn't really find that in here. And if it's, if I missed it, pointed out to me, is there anywhere that this board would be entrusted with being able to review complaints against our police officers?
It would be able to gather the information that's public on it, that they would be able to gather. The, so this is what you get down to with a claim of misconduct with a police officer. And it's not a new model. It's been there a long time. In, and the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court ruled on this process. When an officer comes in who's a public employee to a internal affairs interview, the one thing they're not allowed to do is lie to the investigator. That creates its own separate problem pretty much for the rest of the career of a police officer. So them and the officers around them are compelled to give statements against their interest in that process. The only time they have ever been released is by a, a court order and normally a US District Court court order is where they get released because they have been denied their constitutional rights against self-incrimination in those interviews. And that structure is just what's been there. So that's why IA interviews are closed and locked down. And I will give you an example. If that interview and that investigation report was turned over to a district attorney, it is then legally incompetent for the district attorney to prosecute that officer because they had to conduct their own investigation and couldn't use those statements. So that the charges against an officer would evaporate if that shared with the district attorneys. And that's right. I'm not saying it's a good system. I'm saying that's the system that is there. Why I keep, why I say it actually is, I think, a small change to undo that. The union would rightfully so be coming at us in terms of their legal rights if we attempted to break out that which otherwise could be a role of statements they are compelled to make in an investigation. The other part of that comes with how the complaint came. If it went as a criminal complaint, it, part of it goes under the Criminal History Information Act, which is sealed information that they can't disseminate other than to the participants in the case and the court. And, and so no two things are the same. And so there are a lot of barriers that are built into the law to prevent these. And I really do think there's a, a, a major reform, you know, statewide and nationally, it has to happen to get what the public is demanding. I mean, the laws are, are on the books. It's very hard for me to advise that we can do something different than that, than what is already there. And, you know, and I think, you know, that is the biggest problem is that we, our hands in so many ways are tied. I will note Pittsburgh has a much more robust board on paper. The courts have not treated it that way when they've ended up at the courts, from my reading of the case law. And that took a record, a referendum to amend the Home Rule Charter to get there. I mean, that's how the Pittsburgh got to a citizen review board that is separately funded, but still appointed by the mayor in Pittsburgh. And that has a, you know, because it was a referendum of the public, it's financed, it's staffed by tax dollars because that was a Home Rule Charter change that the public in Pittsburgh voted to have through the referendum process. You know, it is one of only two that are in the national report on, on what is out there. The Cardozo Law School report that I referenced, it sort of shows it's a vicious cycle, you know, you know, abuses lead to the boards. The boards are then oversights. And then there's, then there's a question when there's another problem that the board needs oversight. Some cities are up to three boards. And none of them have addressed the hearts of the problem is what is the systemic racism? How do you deal with that in the system? You know, that is what has driven the entire, it looks almost a hundred year history now of boards that have been in existence. It's the same sort of vicious cycle that's been going around the country. I was surprised the boards go back in time as far as they do, that, that they go. It's a long answer to your question, but, you know, I, I spent a lot of time reading on a lot of pieces, trying to find a way to thread this needle to comply with the law that is there. If the council wants to do something more than is there, you know, the council can vote to do that. I, I, you know, and then we will defend what the council does. But if I'm crafting it, I got to craft it with what I have to work with in terms of what the state and federal laws are.
All right. Correct. So, and then, you know, just in some initial research and again, working with other folks, there's, I mean, there are other communities outside of Pittsburgh that have a, a review board. So I know, like for one is Bristol, PA and Buckscout. And I don't know if you were able to look at that, but.
I think the question is, does the, does that, do the police honor the demands of that board?
Okay.
As it, I mean, I'm trying to give you the practical. Is it a board that looks like it's a board that functions? Or is it a board that has a list of powers that then aren't enforceable? And, and I, and I don't want the answer to that question.
Right. And again, and well, to, and to that, it's, you know, again, wanting someone from the police here is, you know, if, if the, if the, I guess, the, the response to questions of this is going to be, well, we don't want to answer to you or, or we're not, you know, we're not going to answer. Then to me, that's a bad place to start, you know? Again, the, the residents and the taxpayers of Harrisburg pay all of the salaries for everyone on this call and every police officer. So we want to be able to have some sense of accountability. There are, there's legislation moving at the state level, things happening at the federal level, which is why I'm glad that Chair Green is going to be taking some time to, you know, go through this process and get more input because we have to look at how those changes at that level will impact potentially something that we're looking to do. But again, this is why I want someone from the police here because, you know, that statement about, well, we just don't have to adhere to what you're saying, you know? We're all.
And I'm not trying to put that statement in there. I'm trying to just report what I, my sense of what happens everywhere.
Right. Well, well, and, and to that point, I mean, again, it's, it's getting the union on board, the DA on board. Again, when we had this conversation four years ago, part of, part of the, the, the concern was that the DA and the police wouldn't get on board with when we were even just starting to have the discussion about some additional review from, from the citizens. And, you know, accountability is paramount for everything that we do. We try to be as open and transparent as we can, even through this pandemic. So as we continue to move our way through this and on the backend of this, in light of all the things that are happening, I want us to be proactive and not reactive to situations of violence. And we've had, we've had some interactions with residents of our city and the police that we aren't able to always get necessarily full resolution on. So we make sure that, that is the, you know, paramount. Again, going back to the bill, you know what, I, so for now, I'll, I'll pause and allow additional members to ask, ask questions. I don't want to take up all the time, but I may have another question or two at the end, Chair.
All right. Thanks, Councilman Majors. I'll make sure to check back with you. Vice President Allen, do you have any questions?
So I'm going to reserve some of my questions because I'd like to see what the public kind of brings out in this ongoing discussion. And, and that's why I'm going to make some comments to that end right now. So the, the one concern I have about us going down this journey of creating this advisory board that if we haven't addressed the concerns. the concerns of the community in the things that are important to them as part of this, then we've missed the boat. And so some of the comments I've heard kind of play out, I know we all have in the community. I think we really need to make sure that we can specifically speak to them. And, and I'll bring up kind of the, the natural state of conflict, right? There's going to be a natural conflict that occurs between law enforcement and the community. And we, we can't have one side be completely in control of, of how things go. There's a, there's an accountability piece, I think, that we need to make sure that we address as part of this process and and for me to vote in affirmative at the, whenever this comes back up for discussion or vote at the end of the day, I'm going to be asking myself, have we created something that creates more accountability between law enforcement and the community they serve? Have we enabled a process that ensures more open dialogue and communication back and forth between constituents and law enforcement? Have we increased trust between the community and law enforcement? Have we created something in terms of language that we use to devise this and create this? Is something of which leads to a longer term beneficial solution for the community and an increase in kind of awareness about how law enforcement and the community can work together. So as I'm doing this and I've, I've, I've read through it once, I've read through it and I'm kind of, you know, so I'm, I'm kind of taking it all in as we have these conversations, but I'm also really hearing some of the dialogue out in the community on this process. So I want to be very cognizant of how we do this to make sure that at the end, when we, when this body votes something into effect, that that really does provide some, I don't know if the word is support or just comfort and trust in the community that we've been able to address some of these concerns that have existed for some time. And, and, and I know that, and I don't want to even bow to public pressure and say, you know, but it's important, right? We've recognized the importance and the value of taking this step and what we have to do when it comes to reform. So I think that, you know, I'm thrilled that we're at this stage. But I just want to make sure that as we go through this process, we really have listened and that we've heard what members of the community are really seeking and, and take that to heart. And I know this might seem unpopular saying one setting, but you know what? Just knowing that the police union signed off it, that's not really, that doesn't provide me a, a degree of comfort going forward and saying, yep, I'm glad they're on board because that's only one part of the puzzle. And if we're going to create true ongoing, long lasting reform, we've got to make sure that all sides are represented in this conversation and that these needs are met. So Asha, I'm thrilled that we are going to continue this conversation on through the summer. But I encourage all of us to really listen to what our constituents are saying and asking and really take that to heart. And what we want to put forth as a final bill to be passed in this, because if we don't, then what we did would, would be meaningless in the end and, and, and kind of just non-responsive. It, some of the things I want us to think about as part of this process is when we pass this, how much we are kind of allowing that two-way communication to exist. If at any point in time, this legislation seems too one-way focused, like too much where law enforcement has all the ways to communicate back and forth and not enough of the two-way street, then I think again, we've missed the boat with this. So I think as we again, go through this process, some things like that to think about. Lastly, I, I wanted to throw that out as well, and I am just curious about this. And I'm going to ask this, I realize no one might have an answer for me now, but I'd like to know this prior to us passing some of this police reform legislation. I'd be curious as to the statistics in our city on the type of calls that law enforcement responds to and how that's broken down into, was it a call that required actual arrest or restraint or something? Or was it a call that perhaps the law enforcement wasn't the best person to, to respond to that call? I'd like to see some statistics on kind of the type of calls that law enforcement respond to and how it's broken down, how they're categorized. Because again, part of this conversation is to see how can we best utilize our services within the city to meet the, the public safety needs of the community. So again, just throwing out there, I don't know how possible that is, but I'd be really curious as to kind of what that breakdown is. And the last thing that I'll say just before I turn it over, because I know others, I'm sure have plenty to say, is, is just a reminder that the key words that we need to make sure that are part of this conversation forevermore when it comes to public safety is accountability, is trust, is community partnerships, is things that infuse that connection between the community and law enforcement. And that has to be part of this, no matter what we do going forward. So thank you for indulging me, but I just kind of wanted to put that out there into the universe and know that we have a kind of a journey to go on. Oh, I know. And one more thing, I'm sorry. I, I know that the state is in the process of passing some legislation too. And I want to be cognizant of that because I think that might change some of the, the things that may be part of this and other legislation that we pass. So I just want to make sure we're staying on top of these things because there's a lot of moving parts right now on both the state and federal level. So I will stop there, but thank you for indulging me.
Of course. Thank you, Vice President Allen. We'll move on to President Williams. Do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Dan, I mean, Green, it's getting late. I'm getting tired. I'm sorry. I, I concur with, with Mr. Majors and Mr. Allen. I think we should wait until, I mean, we should move forward, but we also should wait until we hear what the federal and the state legislative bodies enact. I have about sixteen questions. And one of those are, will they have access, this committee, will they have access to police records? And if so, do we not need to consider having them bonded?
I will defer to Neil on that. That sounds like a legal question.
So going from where I think the conversation with Councilwoman Green and myself started, this draft of legislation, as she has told me multiple times, is a good starting point to have the discussion. Under the current draft, there would not be a need for a bond because the information is public. What they're gathering is public information, finding a better way to gather it, disseminate it and report upon it. The, uh, so, you know, there would be no bond. I don't know if bonding would even be possible on the records that are there. Frankly, I'm counting on a change in the state law to make our lives a little bit easier in terms of releasing information. But, um, but right now our hands are tied on some of the information or hands literally, we, we would be in violation of state.
That's my question because, you know, they won't have the, you know, the ability to have access to those records because of the fact if something does occur between the police officer and one of our residents, they would want to know about the incident, but we could not give them the full intent of what happened. So when we do give them that information, some of that information is not readily available. And if it is, it should not be given out because of the fact that it may have to go to higher courts. So that's my question. Why, I mean, that was my concern, why we should not have them bonded because they have access to confidential information.
Now, I do have a question. Um, well, as is written right now, they don't have access to public information. But correct, isn't body camera footage, public information, police reports, public information. This is all information that's available to the public. So I don't think they need to be bonded in order to get that information. And I think it would allow for at least in the beginning, a thorough investigation. Because it's not like it will be, like body camera footage wouldn't be redacted. You know, it's public information.
Now, my next question, Ms. Green, is that we already have a liaison between the Harrisburg Police Department and the members of the community. So you're asking, in one of your under-roam function, what would their function be as far as being the liaison between the, the police and the community?
Um, I believe it's, it's more dissemination of information, making sure the public's aware of what's going on and police are aware of what's going on in the communities to help establish that bond, create that bond, spread the word, create more community connections. We have a liaison, but liaison is one person. This is a board of people. They have family members, they have friends, they have more than just one person. They will all live in the community for at least three years prior. So I think that, that's a lot bigger of a liaison than just one person. And then we also have our community policing department, but I, I believe this board will be more of a direct liaison and have a better pulse on our residents than just our community police liaison.
Okay. My next question, and I have quite a few, but I won't ask all of them. I, I do have about fifteen and I will, I know it's a long night. Everybody's tired, but I'll ask a few more. Under expiration of appointed terms and vacancies, you are requesting that, I mean, you are indicating that the chairperson and the committee should make a recommendation to fill a vacant or expired seat. Why are we allowing the committee to replace someone if a vacancy occurs when in the onset we are selecting those individuals?
The idea was to cut back on the confusion as to who was a council appointment, who was a mayoral appointment or will know their culture and know their makeup. And it will still have to then be given to the mayor and council, and then it will have to be confirmed. So they don't get to just make the end all be all decision. But they should have some say so in who the replacement is. I think it would also help to cut back on, uh, some of our boards, things become politicized. Whether it's a mayor or council appointment. So I think this will cut back on that as well.
Okay. And you asked them to, you said membership qualifications, you, you're asking members to commit to time to be community involved. How much time are you asking these committee members to involve themselves in community events?
Um, I don't think there is a specific number that we're looking for, but we're looking for people who are active in their community. So it's, I mean, it's, it's a general statement. It's not that they have to attend so many community events. So.
Okay. One more question. And then the other questions, I will make sure that I send those to you through email. I'm just, you know, briefly going over this. I just had an opportunity to get this document. Under reports and recommendations, you have, you're requiring they have an annual written report under activities to the council and the mayor. Why not do a quarterly report so that we know the status of how many complaints and incidents we're receiving in from the Harrisburg Police Department?
Um, we could make it a quarterly report. A annual report was just more of an encompassing report. Far as the number of incidents reported to the police department, that's something that should be coming along with Resolution fifty-one. And I think that will give us more of what we're looking for in the reporting aspect. I don't think that the, this commission or this advisory committee would be in charge of all of our reporting for our police department. So I think that's something we should get from our police department, not from our advisory committee.
Okay. Thank you. And then, as I said, I will send you the other questions through email.
All right. And then also, um, the requirement is a once a year report, but they can report more often if they want to come every, every meeting and get a public comment or, you know, give us updates. They're always welcome to. It's just a required annual report.
That would be my recommendation so that we know statistically how many complaints and incidents we're getting into the Harrisburg Police Department. So quarterly would give us a better idea. Now, if we, if it turns out that, you know, within a three month period that we don't have any, and we can always amend it or revise this particular bill.
You currently have an ordinance right now that requires a quarterly report on complaints to the police department.
No, we don't get it.
I got you, but I'm just telling you.
I said, live DVD, we don't get, we don't get that report. So we need to put some, some strength in this bill to make sure that we are getting that report on a, on a basis, a regular basis. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome. Um, I'm there. I, I think that as a council, we need to make for sure that, you know, we start holding them accountable when we don't get reports. And that's every department, especially when it comes time for, for budgets. You know, everyone comes with a budget on time, so they need to come with the reports on time and we need to make sure we hold them to that.
Thank you. I certainly agree with that.
So next would be Councilman Madsen.
Thank you, Chairwoman Green. Um, Neil, I know you touched on it a fair amount, but just wanted to kind of get a clarification as best you can. I mean, what does the third class city code allow municipalities to do in terms of these?
Can't hear you, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So in regards to the third class city code, I know you've touched around it. But what, uh, does it allow or give the authority for these boards to do?
So it's the, it's actually the optional third class city code that we're under for boards and commissions. And what it does is it empowers the council to create boards and commissions that are advisory to the council and to the mayor. And, you know, it's, the word is advisory that is in there. And this is, I think, I think it's the eighteenth board, I think, listed in our ordinance of boards and commissions that has been created over the years. I think that was the number at the beginning of this. Maybe it's the thirteenth, but it's, that's just the mechanism that it created. And essentially, if you think about what an advisory board is conceptually, it's a board that helps the governing body and the mayor do their job. It helps them gather specific information or do a specific task related to one of the many obligations that come with being, you know, elected officials. So it is the authority the council has that is carried out to a degree by each of the boards because you can't do all of those things by yourselves. I mean, so that is why boards get created. So this, it gives you the power to create them and to vest them with authority that you have, not authority you don't have. So that's why it's an extension of the council and the mayor. That, that is the authority. So the authority, anything administratively that can be done legislatively, you can pass on to them. And it's still the responsibility and the duty comes back to the council at the other side of it, but you give it to them to do. So what you don't have is judicial power. You just said that we're, we're in a three-part setup, structure of government, as you know, and the council and the mayor don't have that. So short of that, you can give them anything the third class city code expressly gives you or the optional code gives you, which is interpreted liberally. And so you can test them with doing all kinds of reports, all kinds of information. It can, you can test people to do investigations, but at the end of the day, you can't test them to do things that, for example, under the Police Powers Act, what you have to do to be able to be allowed to investigate, there are certain limitations. You have to be certified, you have to have certain requirements, you have to have certain licenses if you're non-law enforcement. All of those things apply to things like investigations. So some boards have investigators, you know, some of the biggest cities have, you know, it's a much more robust thing, but they're dealing with, you know, a population of one and a half million people. And, you know, they, those boards have investigators and attorneys and all of those things on the boards. And you get down to after the top sixty in the country, it drops off precipitously. What powers the boards have and what authority they have. So if the council could hold a hearing on something, for example, let's say you wanted to just hold a hearing, don't have a board throughout the remainder of the year, every two weeks on civil rights reform in the city of Harrisburg. If the council can do that, they can, they can, they can create a board, do that and report back to them to help them do the work. You know, and I'm not sure that answers your question, but, but.
I mean, yeah, just to summarize it for the benefit of the public, essentially what we have the authority or constitutional authority to do as council based off the third class city code is essentially get advice or for them to collect information to provide us some what's happening between the police and the public. But largely, when it comes to subpoenas or any kind of bite or authority, we really don't have that power to grant them that power to do that.
So, so this council has on the, on, on the books, the power to issue an administrative subpoena. It doesn't have the power to compel it. That it, that's the difference. And, and so you can come, you can issue a subpoena and say, we want this to happen. There's mixed case law around the state. One, I said, it was the city of Erie, the council went to enforce a subpoena in court and the court threw the mountains and it had no power to enforce in court themselves. That, that had to be brought through the process of the city's attorney's office out there, not by themselves. So, uh, you know, the case law is a mixed bag on, on what they can do, but so you could issue subpoenas and therefore a board could. But at least from the input I've seen, issue subpoenas that can do what they want, what people want is not there to, to shake out information that is already otherwise under state law, essentially non, non, uh, non-public and, you know, subject to at least two or three other statutes that, that protect and control them. So you can try and maybe the, the public collective of persuasion gets you there. Maybe, you know, the push gets you there. Maybe the pressure gets you there. But, you know, I'm here to just give you, at least from my view, the reality of it, you know, having the authority and enforcing it are two different things.
So it sounds like it's legally murky whether or not we would have the authority to
Right.
do that. Okay. And then I guess the, the other question I have, is there a third class city out there when you were doing your research that does not have a home rule charter that has this sort of ward? And who was it? Because I tried to do a little digging myself and I could not find one.
I, I have not found a clear one. I am actually doing like a survey. I'm through twenty-six of the fifty-three cities right now. And I have not found one.
Okay. That makes two of us. But if you do, could you please share that with us so we can how it would look compared? Okay, that makes two of us. Um, but if you do, could you please share that with us so we can look at how it would look comparatively? And then on, uh, just to close out, it's more of a statement is, uh, you know, I think this board in terms of the data, I think that's going to be critical. That's the one thing we know that they can do. And so crime data, officer data and public opinion data, I think are going to be critical to report back to councils. So we know how things are going in terms of relations with the police uh, and the wider community. And so when it comes to that data piece, I just want to emphasize, I think those, those three components are going to be critical moving forward. But I look forward to engaging the community and hearing their thoughts and perspective. I look forward to seeing the legislation looks like both at the state and federal level. And I do think uh, we should maybe, council should maybe potentially take a look at um, if we, we know there's some things that the community wants that we cannot provide. Certainly drafting some sort of resolution or statement that the state and federal government need to make these reforms so that we can further uh, get what they want. And I know largely that may be symbolic, but I still think it's important that the community feels heard. And that's it.
All right. Thanks, Councilman Madsen. Uh, we're going to move on to Councilwoman Bowers. Any questions or comment?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Green. I have a, a few questions. Um, so Neil, will the committee have authority to make um, disciplinary and policy and or training recommendations? Or is it strictly limited pop to policy and training recommendations?
So I, I, I'll be a lawyer with you for a second and ask, what do you mean by disciplinary recommendation? If you mean a policy on discipline, absolutely. You know, could, so any policies, police policy that would make the police more accountable would be something the body could do because it's something you can do. Right? You can decide, this is what we want. And it can't be what's contractual in the union contract. And they can't have a seat at the contract table because the Commonwealth says so. You know, the Commonwealth has an act for what goes into a, 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 a u- uniform contract for police and fire in the state. Um, but any type of policy that would make policing better, more accountable, all of those. And that's what I talk about. I think keeping the thing going is what actually leads to the improvement. There is tons of information that no one is absorbing. Cause no one asks for it. We do the right to know. Frankly, not that much police information gets asked for compared to what's out there. You know, uh, it, it just doesn't. People, and no one's to set, no one's gathering it, no one's synthesizing it, no one's analyzing it. Because we, we get it usually either by a piece of litigation where it's a very limited request or a broad right to know that's looking at a bigger set of things to draw some number on a particular issue. But we get very few sort of analysis-type requests. And this board would be able to take all that. They'd be able to analyze the videos that come off of body cams and dash cams from cars and the pole cams. They'd be able to analyze what comes off of uh, uh, you know, uh, summaries of use of force reports. It'd be able to come off what comes out, the summaries of the results of discipline as opposed to the record of the discipline, you know, the underlying record. Um, so there, but no one's really there except the police themselves to do that. And frankly, they don't have time on the management side. They really are managing law enforcement. They're not kind of doing that. And they retrain on the spot is my experience with them. If there's a problem that they encounter, they try to bring them in at that next roll call and put them in retraining. That's what they try to do. Um, you know, and, and it, and it works sometimes well and sometimes it doesn't seem to work with an individual officer. But, but they're worried about today, the calls that come today and their response today. There is no one tasked to, to use this information in a way that's a long-term look uh, at how the police should be managed.
Okay, thank you. Um. So in the event that there is a disagreement between, say, um, a recommendation that the committee has made and the police bureau, who would serve as a mediator?
Um, I, so two parts. One is, under the third-class city code, the mayor supervises the police in a city. That's a, that is statutory. So the ultimate civilian supervision of police come under mayors. Um, even if you were a board where the mayor was a member of council, it still comes under the mayor who's the member of council. The right now, I think the mayor would be the one who would have to hear it from that and the council would have it. And I think it would be both. There's no one appointed that's another one to resolve the mediation, but that was what I talked about with other cities. What's come about is that they've actually appointed a board over the board because the board could not come into agreement on what to do. Um, and no one would follow their recommendations. Um, and so it is good to think about that on the front end as opposed to the backend. You know, on how do you do it? How do you get from point A to point B and actually honor the work that's been done by the public uh, to improve the department?
Okay, thank you. Um, how will the committee's affect, effectiveness be measured?
I, I don't think there's an answer to that yet. So.
Um, we've been talking about it, but I'll ask a formal question. How will the administration and city council be able to hold the committee accountable? Will it be through their analysis of trends and data they receive? Will it be through the either quarterly or annual reports? How will we be able to hold this committee accountable?
So big picture, any committee, um, the accountability right now is that you appoint them and can remove them for cause. You can change the legislation if you don't like what they're doing to, to, to change the powers that they have. Um, but right now there'll be reports to hold them accountable. I think Ms. Green can speak to what they're trying to get out of that reports and see where that's going to get you from this point A to point B on uh, the council being better advised on what to do.
Yeah, I think the, the reports are going to be how we hold them accountable. Um, I think that as we continue to have conversation and craft this, that we can be more specific on what we want in the report. Because I think that's how we'll measure their effectiveness. Um, right now, it's, it's um, the reports they're putting out. But if you want to look for specific things, whether it's um, uh, whether it's um, arrest data, whether it's civilian complaints, whether it's um, arrest data per district. We, we need to figure out what we're looking to get out of the reports. And when we make that more specific, then we're going to measure it. So I think that's something we still need to build into it.
Okay, thank you. How many residents have successfully completed the citizens' police academy?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. I was just curious because it's listed under the membership qualifications. I was just wondering. Um, the, I think the last application I saw was from twenty eighteen. And I know that the cohorts are only uh, limited to twenty people. And I didn't know how many people successfully completed or how many cohorts they had.
The police will be able to answer that question. They, they operate the academy.
Neil, will we be able to have them at the next meeting on Tuesday? I think, I suggest that we should, because there's questions that uh,
I'll, I'll make, I'll make sure they're there, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
My final question is relative to the appointees. Um, that we're operating off of the seven police districts, but uh, Councilwoman Green, is there how will city council determine our four potential appointees? What, what would that look like? Would each member bring a recommendation for consideration or, or have you thought about our role in this?
Um, I haven't thought about how we uh, would recommendations. Um, we're a pretty cohesive council, so I thought that's something we could work on together. Um, I didn't, I didn't feel there will be much, um, much of a problem for us to come up for our recommendations as a team. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, are there any other questions? I know uh, Councilman Major said he might have some more questions or anyone who might have thought of questions as we moved along.
Yeah, um, I uh, I apologize because I'm like really like frustrated because again, like I, I understand that the police may be on board with this, but to me, this is uh, it's, I, I appreciate the effort, but we got a lot of work to do on, on, on this. Um, you know, I think one of the, the frustrations that I have, uh, and I haven't been verbalizing it because I've been trying to be measured because I'm, I'm, I'm really angry right, right now. Um, and what makes it me even more angry is there are laws on the books about providing us with reports. We don't get them. And part of, part of that is on us too, because we're not, we're not forcefully yelling and asking for them on a regular basis. But what is preventing them from being just submitted to us as we, as, as the law and the ordinance says? Because again, if this is an advisory committee and the police don't have to take the advice outside of, they take it under consideration, what they decide to do with it. We have no, I mean, even if the committee votes to say, hey, we want X done, the police take that, hey, we'll take that under advisement. They do nothing with it. Then what? Then our community is still in the same place we've been for years. So what? And this isn't, this is germane to this because again, we're talking about giving them data and access to information and uh, body cams, et cetera. It means nothing if we have nothing to make sure that the police do something with it. So again, my question right now is why aren't we getting that information from the police right now? And we have the mayor and the solicitor here. And again, we have nobody from the police here to give us it. Before, before when uh, a former captain was here, uh, he said, look, we don't you know, our systems are old. It might take us a little bit to get the information. Then we may have gotten one since I've been here. Like what is preventing them from giving us information? I don't want to be belligerent and yell, but I'm angry and I don't understand what's preventing them. We have the mayor here. Why can't he, are you getting reports from the police? Like what, what is going on?
Uh, I, I can't speak to why the police are not here tonight. I will say
Well, I know why, I know why the commissioner isn't here. He was on a Facebook Live with Penn Live. That was advertised. So we know why the, the commissioner isn't here. So I want to know, why don't we get those reports?
Uh, you're talking about, uh, well, uh, you, you're going to have to, you're going to have to ask, uh, you're going to have to ask the police and you're going to have to get at, uh, uh, I, I don't have an explanation for
You are the oversight of the police, Mayor.
Yeah. Well, I, I have access to all the information that I need. So I, I don't know what information you don't have that you want. And if you articulate what it is that you want, I will, uh, I will make sure that you get it.
Read the orders that we passed about getting police complaints submitted to council on a, I believe it might have been a, a quarterly
Quarterly basis.
Quarterly basis.
Yeah.
That was, that was passed when you were here.
Yeah, Councilman Major, have you invited the police to give that report on a quarterly basis?
We don't have to.
In writing. We got one in writing.
Well, you'll have to take it up with the police. I, I'm not, uh, I'm not defending that. I'm just saying there are probably ways that we can uh, uh, be a little bit more proactive in making sure that you get that information. Such as inviting them and scheduling them to give, give that information publicly.
Okay, but pub, I, I, and I appreciate that. We get, getting it publicly is great. But we also need it in writing and they can submit that in writing without a, without submitting it publicly at a session of, of city council. Um, additionally, um, so, and you know what? I don't want to, I know we're going to have a, another series of meetings, so I wanted to get that off my chest, but I know there are public comments that may, that were received. Are, are they going to be read into the record tonight? Or I, I just, I want to know because I know there's people in the public that are uh, that have, that are on the live right now.
Okay, um, let me say this to you, um, Mr. Majors. We have twenty-four people who have attested to a, uh, one comment. And it's to the elected members of city council. Then we have ten other comments. Because of the late hour, it's almost nine o'clock, five minutes before nine. I was going to recess and that way they still would be, those comments that people made tonight will still be on record next week.
Okay, but next week is, uh, are we having another work session or is it
They're having a work session, but we will, I, I'm going to recess. I'm not going to close, adjourn this meeting. When I recess, it's just giving us another day to come back. And I will make sure all those comments given by the residents of this city are read into record, every last one. It's late and we have another, I think Ms. Green has another resolution on her in her committee, but it is nine o'clock and I'm a little tired myself and so is the other members. So I was thinking of recessing and not adjourning. That way we can continue the meeting next Tuesday along with the other work session that we're going to have.
Comments being read so that the folks have a sense of the issues and questions people have and that way, you know, as, that will also help me formulate my thoughts too.
Just to use the, the comments, uh, for twenty-three of them. Uh, they attested to one comment. And then there's ten other comments that are, were given by the community tonight and they're pretty lengthy.
I will say, President Williams, that we may have to make, I, I mean, not to and deter anybody, but next week will be another long meeting just because there's quite a few things. I know that there's still this on the agenda before hiatus. Um, and then you're going to go right into the legislative session to then, I guess, vote on it if that's what we're still doing. If that's not what we're still doing, then we can just continue this. But either way, it's going to make for a long meeting, just to be honest with you between
I understand that, Ms. Houston, and I am the president and I, we've been here three and a half hours and I am tired. Okay?
Okay.
Um, and I am going to make sure that the residents of City Harrisburg understand that we are going to read every comment into record. We will continue the meeting from tonight. I won't adjourn. As I understated before, I will recess. That way it stays on record. Every comment and every person who submitted a comment will be on record for next week.
Could the comments, could the comments be shared with council by email?
Yes, they, they can be.
And also since the comments are written comments, not verbal comments, if there are any way they can again, made public, um, either on the council's website or some, some way that uh, people can review them.
Now, I'll tell you what, if you want to sit here tonight and you want to read all the comments into twenty-three, um, all were on one comment. It's to the elected members of city council. And then the other ten are pretty lengthy and they are to city council. So if you're having no problem sitting here tonight, then we will continue.
You're asking me?
I'm asking everyone. You're the chair.
If it was me, I'd say, okay, but um, it's up to
I'm asking everyone.
I'm okay with reading the count or the comments.
I'm fine with reading the comments as well.
Okay.
Same here.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Houston? We will go into the next resolution, then we will read the comments. Or Ms. Green, do you want to read the comments and then go into your, your next resolution?
Um, we'll go into the resolution and then read the comments just, um, because some of the comments might pertain to that resolution as well.
Okay, fine. Mr. Allen, are you still on?
I'm still here. Uh, I'm sorry.
I was nodding that we could read the comments.
Go ahead, Ms. Green.
If there are no more uh, comments or questions on uh, Bill Eight, we will continue that conversation. Um, but we'll move on to Resolution fifty-one for tonight. Um, so uh, Ms. Houston, could you read Resolution fifty-one into record, please?
Sure. Resolution fifty-one of twenty twenty is a resolution providing guidelines for the review of use of force policies and practices in the city of Harrisburg and establishing timelines for such reporting to the mayor and council.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Um, and then who from the uh, city will be giving us a summary of this resolution?
I think that's me, um, Chair.
All right.
The uh, the police as part of um, Plea Act, which is mentioned in this, which is their accreditation, is required to do use of force reports on every use of force over a certain level. Um, you've probably heard them speak publicly about, they think refer to it as the compendium of force for a police officer, which is not something they created, but which is a national standard. The first uh, element of force under the compendium is the physical presence of a police officer in uniform. They consider that force. You get down to use of force with your hands or any other device. You start getting into reporting and that doesn't mean use of force by arresting someone. That means physically being having to take control of a situation and, 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 and actually almost do combat with someone. Uh, and they're trained on how to do that. Uh, that, you, those things in a report would come into this breakdown uh, of a report to this council first for uh, twenty twenty, which is the direction to pay, if you pass this, they would, they would produce later this year. And then by November, produce one for all of twenty nineteen. Uh, there isn't such a report that exists right now and it will take some, some work administratively for them to pull all this information out. But they, but they already log use of force every day, all day. Um, I, and it's not that, that there's tons of them, but, but it's, and it's hard to compare year over year frankly, because COVID sort of changed this year's police statistics, just like it's changed everything else. You know, but it has to be something that involves, uh, the drawing of a weapon, the using of a weapon, using of a fist and hitting somebody.
I think he froze on us.
Sorry, but his facial expression on the screen is hilarious.
Neil? Wow.
Neil, can, Neil, can you hear us? Okay.
All right, I think Neil is frozen, so we'll wait for him to come back to, to, um, finish summarizing things, um, but I will kick some, uh, with this. So this resolution, um, was crafted with reporting in mind because we don't get, um, all the reports that we requested in the past from the police department. So in this report, the law bureau would actually be crafting the report with information provided to them from the police department, uh, which will provide a little more time, but luckily get us our reports in a more timely manner. The information that will be provided in the reports, uh, Mayor Papenfus, I believe you can speak to this because you had a meeting with the police department. Uh, it's all consistent with the current reports they're already providing, um, required by the state. So it shouldn't be an issue getting the information or making sure the information is available. Um, that's correct, right?
Yes, that's, that's accurate. Uh, again, Neil was, I think before he froze, explaining that whenever force is used, uh, the officers are required to file a use of force report. What this would do would be, it would collect all that data, uh, categorize that data and then, uh, give you council a sense of, um, you know, how much force is actually being used and in what circumstances. And then you can track that, uh, ideally, you know, sort of month to month, year to year.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna start with some questions from my council members. Neil, are you back?
Looks like you're back, yes.
All right. Did you want to add anything to that? Neil, thanks for hopping back on for us, um.
We're, we're good.
All right. So I'll start with questions. Um, I'll start all the way to my left if we were on the desk. So I'll start with Councilwoman Bowers.
Hey, Councilwoman Green, I just have one question. I think I'm clear on, uh, the policy initiatives that are being implemented. But I wanted to know, I guess from the mayor, I know, uh, I think it was the second week of June, you asked for our assistance in soliciting a commentary regarding Eight Can't Wait, the Campaign Hero Initiative. And I know there was a separate email soliciting those comments. So I was just curious to know if you received any, how many? Were they similar in nature or could you provide some updates, uh, regarding those emails?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Bowers. I'd be happy to, uh, uh, the email you're referencing is eightcan'twait@harrisburgpa.gov. That's the number eight, C-A-N-T-W-A-I-T. Um, and we asked the public to go to our website, right on the homepage of harrisburgpa.gov. You can download and print and read the city's use of force general order. Um, and, uh, you can, uh, make suggestions and comments. And I'm pleased to say, uh, we've got quite, uh, quite a stack, at least, uh, over, over four or five dozen comments from various residents, uh, related to the general order. That process is ongoing and people can continue to submit their comments. And I'm hoping that I can run, um, that parallel to, uh, council's hearings on these other, uh, resolutions and bills so that, uh, um, it, it can be a part of the continuing conversation. Because in the end, uh, I think we're going to look to make some revisions to the use of force policy. And I can say that, uh, a couple of the areas that have elicited the most public comment have to do with, um, uh, uh, the provision which allows for in certain circumstances shooting at moving vehicles and does not outright ban that in Harrisburg. Uh, a desire for a provision that would require officers to intervene when they see excessive force being, uh, used by, um, another officer, uh, as well as, uh, uh, some, uh, uh, concern over whether or not, uh, we should be clearer in the requirement of issuing a verbal warning before. These are all parts of a, a larger conversation about use of force. And I'm open for, uh, uh, feedback and comments. And, uh, again, that policy is on the website, so people can download it, read it and, and, and make suggestions. Thank you.
Yes, I found it to be easily accessible. Can we, are, are, can you please share those comments with us? I don't know whether it's appropriate to share them with Chairwoman Green and she can share if she feels inappropriate. But I, I'd like to see that commentary.
I have no objection to that and, uh, I will follow, uh, Chairwoman Green's recommendation. How about that?
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine with sharing it with all the council at one time. Um, I think, uh, an email blast with everyone included will be sufficient, um, rather than passing it through me.
Okay, I'll, I'll have, I'll accumulate what we have received so far. And, uh, I will maybe forward that to the city clerk's office, uh, for dissemination to all of you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions, Councilwoman Bowers?
No, thank you, thanks.
All right, uh, Councilman Mattson.
Uh, not at the moment, but maybe come back to me.
All right, um, moving on to be President Williams.
Not at the moment either. Uh, please do come back to me. I'm just going through some things now, uh, especially deadly force.
Vice President Alex.
So no questions, but to the end where we've had the conversations about back and forth about not getting reports, getting reports and things like that. I know there's been a frustration that we've shared for some time where we pass something and then we're like, yeah, we're gonna get updates and we don't get the updates. Um, can we put something in as part of the passage of this that kind of puts specific dates in place? I know there was one honor about August first and then quarterly after that. Um, can we just impose some deadlines to that? Even to the point of saying that a member of public safety would be present at the legislative session of the first at the end of a quarter or, you know, something to that end that would compel that to be something statutorily that could occur, that we know that there's a guarantee that we will get this information. I, I mean, I hate to be that specific in terms of things that we want to put in there, but, um, again, I feel like this is, not that the resolution is worthless, but if we're not getting the data, then the resolution in effect is kind of worthless. Um, so I, I'm just thinking to that end and as we go through it, I know there'd be more discussion, but I, I'm just thinking something to that end that could, that would be helpful and or, um, good for us to kind of build that into the, the reporting mechanism.
So that's all I have right now. At, at the end of the, of the resolution, Councilman, there is provision that tasks the law bureau after the initial report comes to create legislation as opposed, an ordinance as opposed to just a resolution to, to put the framework in when, when, I think the first thing is, the thought was gather information. And, and I'll, I'll give you an example that I don't know the answer to. How many times have the police, uh, drawn a firearm in two thousand and twenty? You know, that's a piece of data that you would be getting out of this. And how many times has a taser been deployed in two thousand and twenty? That'd be a piece of data you're getting out of this. The question is, when you get that data, how do you want to frame an ordinance? For what exactly? Because you're seeing, I think, for the first time, the compendium of what use of force is, in its truest reporting sense. And the idea was that would need a discussion to what you want in an ordinance altogether. So these two pieces of legislation were considered a start to where the council's gonna go, uh, as it goes through the year and probably as it goes through next year as well. On, you know, what should be policies for the police bureau? Um, and, and the idea with both was starting with information. Okay, if I miss, Ms. Green can correct me.
No, you're all right now.
Okay, then that's all I have right now.
All right, um, so then we'll move on to Councilman Majors.
Yes, um, sorry, so, uh, as a part of this, you know, looking at everything that's gonna need to be reported, what, if any, piece of this will be public facing information? Or is this just a report that is submitted to council and maybe a advisory board or a review board?
So, so the resolution puts it to both the council and the advisory board, the advisory board has created, uh, the reports. And it would be public information, the report that would come to council, it's not gonna be a confidential report that comes through.
Right, no, but I, I mean, in terms of making it accessible on a website, not something that has to be subject to right to know.
That, that's simply a decision everyone has to make. That's not my, that's the council and the mayor making that decision. If you, if you, if you so direct, that's what it is.
Okay. All right, yeah, no, because I'm, I've been doing some research and trying to, you know, figure out how we can ensure that there's as much public information as available and trying to see how we can ensure that that information is something that is accessible. I mean, if we're putting together reports, um, and, you know, having that information disseminated, it should also be, uh, available, uh, to the extent possible in a public facing document. I will, uh, yeah. Yeah, at this time, I, I'll, uh, defer to my colleagues. I may have another, uh, additional question.
All right, that will bring us to, uh, Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions or comments?
Um, well, I would do. I feel like for some of these discussions, I need myself, like some training in what law enforcement officers do so I could like figure out what, you know, I, I feel like I don't have enough, like the technical information so that the resolution is as inclusive as I may or may not want it to be. I don't know if someone has a resource that they could, uh, send to me. Um, the other thing is like, you know, those quarterly reports, you know, it goes back to this issue I've had with, with the city for a long time in terms of like HR issues, right? Like I would assume that complying with city ordinances would be part of your job evaluation every year. Did you, you, you know, like that would just be a component, so, um, so, you know, I think that's, I don't know how to see that if it's an HR issue, like the city just doesn't manage or, um, a lack of, of good faith in trying to comply with ordinances, I don't know. But, um, but I think, you know, as a city, we don't have a lot of authority, but we do have some and, uh, we need to, need to use them. So anyways, so my general comment is I feel like I need more, a little bit more technical um, understanding. So if someone has a resource that they could refer me to, um, that, so that they can contribute better to crafting this a little bit more clearly.
And we had discussed internally, and I discussed, this was actually our outside council that handles law enforcement matters. If the council wanted this summer, we could put together, you know, a three-hour program on the rules that govern police in terms of what they do, what, what, what laws govern what they do, what reports, sort of just have a framework for some of the discussions and where to go from there. Um, that's doable, we just, and they're willing to do it. We just have to give some parameters to get it done.
I would like that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be a great resource for us, um, to have, so. I guess that's something we can work on crafting now.
I'll work with you and we'll, we'll put together a program.
All right, thanks. Um, are there any other comments, questions, concerns about Resolution Fifty-One?
Uh, just, just a question, Neil, what is the, um, General Order Number seventeen dash oh four? Do, can you get us, can you get us a copy of that?
Yeah, that was attached. That is the Use of Force General Order.
Okay. That is, okay, I have that, but, um, all right, they said that this is updated on a annual basis?
It's reviewed on an annual basis for updates, yeah. So if there's something to change, if you, if you look at the first two numbers, that's the last year that it was published. So this version was published in two thousand and seventeen.
Yes.
And reviewed every year is what they do.
So since November seventeenth, twenty-ninth of seven, two thousand and seventeen, this hasn't been updated, right? And this is two thousand and twenty.
Right, but so the, but if you, this, if you look at all of the police general orders, they're not, there's not enough people to update them every year. They try to adopt them and then implement and then measure how they're doing against them. I think informally more than formally, and then they change in, in pieces, they focus on different general orders over time. So I will say on, on the proposal that I think President Obama was putting out, seven of the eight things that he proposes are in the police's general order, which is more than most of the country has right now. So they were looking at it in a historical point, in a much more recent time than a lot of departments have. They were updating there. So seven of the eight, the only one that isn't in there, uh, is the, uh, direct obligation to intervene, uh, in an incident. Uh, that's the one that is not in the current policy.
Because it identifies determining reasonable force under the, under this. So I'm just concerned that we probably need to look at that and update that, amend that.
So if, if we get into a dicey world, just so we're clear, of legislative and executive authority, you know, the council puts it together, their training comes out of Pleiak and other places for their accreditation. Their definitions don't come from themselves for the most part. Uh, and I think this is what they have to review with you. They have to review with you, where does this stuff come from? You know, they haven't sat down by themselves and came up with it. And I think a fair question is, are they using the best source? Is it the only source or are they picking and choosing? I don't have the answer to that question, um, you know, but, 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 you know, they do bring other resources to the table when they do these policies. And they do take them from the academies and the accreditation.
Thank you, Councilman Green. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments or concerns?
Yeah, question, um, also, I'm trying to go through, look at the, the general order and the, uh, and some of the, the highlights. So I know, um, another issue in terms of use of force has, has to do with, um, individuals that, uh, are fleeing. Are, are, are cops under the general orders prohibited? I mean, are they prohibited from, uh, using deadly force from someone who is fleeing against someone who was fleeing?
They can answer that better than I can.
Okay, all right. So then with that, I, uh, I'm going to ask that we have another public comment period in public meeting on this issue, uh, because, again, to my earlier point, some of the questions that we have to deal, dealing with use of force are better asked of the police. Our, neither commissioner, none of our captains are here. So, uh, I think having a larger discussion, uh, at a later time or have this, having Resolution Fifty-One a part of the conversation on Bill Eight as we continue to have, uh, meetings is gonna be important because the questions that I have would need to be answered by a member of, uh, law enforcement. And again, these questions and concerns are coming from a place of wanting us to try to improve our stuff, our, uh, to improve the way that our police interact and give us, the public, everyone a better understanding of, uh, the, the policies that are at use. So I don't know if there's any additional comment, but also look forward to hearing, um, some of the public comment that's gonna, that was provided. So I'll defer to Chair Green, sorry. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, so we will continue this discussion. Do we want to put this on, um, next week's agenda so to continue the discussion since the police will be there? Or do we want to put it, um, further out? I know the original, the first report's supposed to be according to this, um, August first, which will be after we return from hiatus. So, um, if that's the case, we want to push it to actually return from hiatus, then we need to make sure we push that first reporting date back. So do we have any recommendation if we want to put it on next week's calendar or if we want to push it until we return from hiatus?
Well, you, I, I don't want to put it on next week's calendar because our agenda is full, as you see. I would rather for you to have two meetings, one in July and one in August, uh, to bring this back up, both these pieces of legislation back up, because there's going to be several more questions. Um, tonight I didn't answer any questions on, uh, the one resolution we had just now, except that one, for the review of use of force policies and practices. I'm looking through this and as I go through this, I do have several questions. And I still have about eight on, uh, Bill Eight. So if you would probably look at the calendar, we would have to just come back once in July. So if you would probably look at the calendar, we would have to just come back once in July and once in August, or if you can have them both in August, that would be fine. All right. You're going to have to give the uh, residents of the city. Time to um, read about what we've done and read about what we discussed and give them the opportunity to comment.
Right. All right. So um, we'll continue to have this discussion. Um, this won't be on next week's agenda, uh, even on the workshop agenda for more discussion. We'll have more discussion over the summer and then we'll um, bring it. Uh, after our hiatus. So if that's the end of the comments or questions, I will give it back to President Williams to continue the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Houston, are you there for the public comment for the first? Comment by the twenty-three people?
I am, and actually there's an additional six. Um, after I went back to the public comment email, there was an additional six who. Attested to this one particular comment.
Would you please read their, all their names too, so that they can be, they, they understand that we are not going to read it twenty-four times, but we're going to read it one time with all of them in inclusion?
Correct. Yep. Um, so I'll read the comment first and then I'll list their name and their street. Um. So the comment is elected members of city council. We demand public safety institutions that are fully accountable, fully beholden to demonstrate public democratic control. And truly serve the interests of the public, particularly the black residents of Harrisburg who for too long have been targeted and mistreated by police. We write to demand implementation of a citizens review board of the Harrisburg Police Department, one that holds affirmative oversight. Powers, the proposed police advisory board is limited and assuring this demand is met. It lacks the quintessential subpoena power needed to enact meaningful oversight and accountability. Further, our demands extend to the full allowance of board members to review police investigate. They, excuse me, police investigations being completed with full transparency. This review allows for a timely assessment of procedures to determine if any further investigation is necessary. This further allows for the board to draw conclusions through independent investigations inclu- including, but not limited to DA investigators. And medical professionals. Oversight by way of the external review can create opposition by the very group that it is designed for surveillance. However, the police department should hold no right to oppose their own oversight through checks and balances. No existing organization possesses the right nor ability to govern themselves or be relied on to impartially. Regulate, oversee and hold itself and its own members accountable. Harrisburg Police hold no exception to that truth. The proposed advisory board as it stands without subpoena and oversight power is not a viable one. We write to demand dismissal of the existing proposal and implementation of a more thorough citizen centered and empowered proposal at this time. We write, we also write to demand an immediate review of the current use of force policies in complete alignment with the compliance measures. Of the United Nations Code of Conduct for Law Enforcement Officials nineteen seventy-nine, which states firearms should not be used to. Use except with a suspended offender, offender offers. Armed resistance or otherwise jeopardizes the lives of others unless extreme measures are not sufficient to restrain or apprehend a suspected offender. The City of Harrisburg's organizational charter, chart shows the power of the city lies first in its citizens. Not in the institutions attempting to govern through stifled voices and concerns posed by citizens. City council must take a decisive stand on these issues declaring that the people of Harrisburg, not the police, are in control of how our communities are governed. And um, the thirty people who attested to this, um, the first one was Amelia Diana. Um, she's in the nine hundred block of North Third Street, Jasmine Sabranis, um, the two hundred block of Hummel Street. Terry Hall Baker, the three hundred block of Minnick, Minnick Street. Martha Brown, the fourteen hundred block of Zarker Street, Tyler Chick. Uh, the twenty-one hundred block of Penn Street, Brandon Basom, the uh, three or the three thousand block. Of uh, third, North Third Street, Kendra Marie Hoffman, um, the twenty-three hundred block of uh, Penn Street. Um, Jessica Long, the thirty-one hundred block of Second Street, Carl Singleton, um, the eighteen hundred block of Holly Street. Melissa Hansberger, the sixteen hundred block of Green Street, Mark Silver, the seventeen hundred block of Green Street. Brett Peters, um, the three thousand block of North Second Street. Richard Abel, the twelve hundred block of North Third Street, Sparkle Thompson, the twenty-six hundred block of Lexington Street. Winnie O, Allison Hill resident, South Thirteenth Street, Levon Eby. Twelve hundred block of North Third Street, Scott and Debbie Shepler of twenty-two hundred block of Market Street. Kelly Laura, twenty-three hundred block of Green Street, Jose Morales Junior, the um, two, the two hundred block of Minnick Street. Liz Herman, the two hundred block of Verbeck Street, Robert Schoff, the fifteen hundred block of Green Street. Uh, Venus Hall Baker, um, the Minnick Street. Uh, Pamela Parsons, eighteen hundred block of Holly Street, Jennifer Hartman, sixteen hundred block of Green Street. Doctor uh, Kamika Campbell, three hundred block of South Front Street. Ellen Schink, twenty-four hundred block of Green Street, Jane um, Bot. Botchwatch, sorry if I, if I butchered that, nineteen hundred block of Market Street, Jacob Newton. Um, North Street for Fior de Lisa White, um, the one hundred block of Thirteenth Street. Erin O'Day, the twenty-four hundred block of North Second Street and Shannon Tooker, um, Uptown Harrisburg. So those were all who's um, sent in the same exact message, like I said, uh, of which I just previously read. And then there were um, several others who sent in their um, own personal comments. Um, and here they go. Uh, dear city council members, my name is Rachel Gold and I live near Fifth and Graham Street in Harrisburg. I am writing to comment on the proposed bill eight. Dash twenty twenty to establish a citizens law enforcement advisory committee. I oppose this bill for a number of reasons. The committee created by this bill, the citizen law enforcement eight advisory committee is not given any real power. They do not have the ability to compel the police to release use of force reports, citizen complaints. Or information on pending investigations and they are unable to influence discipline of police officers. This committee is clearly not intended to help protect the citizenry from police misbehavior. In addition, the board is not truly independent from the police between measures like the police commissioner sitting as. A non-voting member of the board requiring committee members to ride along with police officers once per year. And having their positions appointed by the mayor or city council, it is unlikely that members would be truly free to speak critically of. Of or in opposition to the police. But the critical issue with this bill is the lack of recognition of the actual problems of policing in Harrisburg and elsewhere. There is a nationwide uprising around the realities of syst- systematic racism and racial profiling and their effects. Too often fatal on black and brown people. To create a board with no real power that is. Tacitly controlled by the police and has a primary focus to improve community relationships with law enforcement. While not recognizing this larger underlying problem is to completely ignore the current national discourse. I would much rather see disinvestment from the police department and reallocation of those funds to critical needs with Harrisburg communities. Improve schools, job opportunities and reimagine public safety, infrastructure outside of the realm of policing. I urge city council to make the city's budgeting process fully transparent. And provide specific information publicly as to how community members can be engaged in this process. I look forward to being involved. Sincerely, Rachel Gold. And the next comment, um, dear city council members, my name is Amanda Arbor and I live near fifteenth and Dairy Streets in Harrisburg. I'm writing to comment on the proposed bill eight twenty twenty to establish a citizens law enforcement advisory committee. As a resident, as a city resident, I oppose this bill for the following reasons. Um. First, there is no acknowledgement in the opening clause of the bill of the actual problem. Language around serving all people, creating positive police community relations. And ensuring public safety is used, but no acknowledgement of systemic racism, racial profiling, excessive use of force. And the killing of black and brown people, which is what the people. Is what the people of Harrisburg are speaking out on and taking to the streets about. If we cannot even acknowledge that this is the problem, then we are not going to be able to even start to address it. Second, this bill does not give the citizens law enforcement advisory committee any real power. They would not have subpoena powers to compel use of force reports. Citizens complaints, personnel files or other information from the police department, nor would they be empowered to make determinations about this. Discipline for police officers related to use of force incidents. Verbage like recommendations and as needed, make it clear that this body would only have access to what the police department is willing to share. And that it would not have any decision-making or enforcement authority. Third, the requirements of citizens law, citizens law enforcement advisory committee. Members maintain control of this body by the police department. Things like having the police commissioner as a non-voting member of the committee, requiring that committee members be appointed by the mayor and city council. And easily removable by city council. And requiring the committee members complete a ride along and training conducted by, by the police department. All underscored the point that the establishment of this body is expressly. For the police department to appear to be taking input from the community while actually controlling community members every step of the way. Even if this bill were to be strengthened to address these concerns. It would still not solve the problem of the inherent violence and oppression that is core to how police departments operate in the US. We need to make funds out of. We need to take funds out of the police department's budget, reallocate those funds to the community and completely reimagine. What public safety looks like in Harrisburg. I urge city council to make the city's budgeting process fully transparent. And provide specific information pub- publicly as to how community members can be engaged in this process. Thank you, Amanda Arbor. Um, this is from Heather Pickens. Dear city council members, my name is Heather. Pickens and I live near fifteenth and Dairy Street in Harrisburg. I am writing bill, I'm writing bill eight dash twenty twenty to establish a citizens law enforcement advisory committee. As a city resident, while I appreciate the council's effort to look at ways to improve policing practices in our city. I oppose this bill and have summarized my reasons below. First, if the city is to proceed with the police advisory board, more ownership of who is one. Who is on the board and the terms of it need to belong to residents versus the mayor or city council members. If the purpose of the committee is for the community to have input, then the residents of Harrisburg need to have the agency to have real input. Into police policy and practices. It should also have some sort of power. Such as the ability to subpoena necessary information and call on independent investigators when necessary. For the committee to benefit the community. Second, though not second in importance, this bill does not name the impact of systemic racism and po- and policing in general. And our city in particular, and this must be addressed in order to ensure the safety of our residents. We need to name the problem in order to create solutions. Additionally, the City of Harrisburg deserves to have more investment in our communities in general and specifically. My neighborhood in Allison Hill, where my residents do not feel safer when there are police around. We need to be looking at moving funds from the police budget to the community and making this a transparent process for residents. Thank you, Heather Pickens. Hang on one second. There's a few more here. Um, this one says, my thanks for creating this bill and receiving public comments. Harrisburgers have been needing and have been requesting an advisory committee slash review board for many years. I am glad to see progress moving into that direction. As a lifelong resident, I have watched our police department go through many changes from nineteen fifty-three. And find they most often reflect this leadership they are given. Much good, some horrid. The need for oversight slash advisor committee is a constant need. Power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely, applies for all of us. After reading this bill several times, I have concluded if it is not going to be. If, if it is not going to just be a good looking protective shield for the police department, it needs subpoena power at the least. I would like to see it a bit more independent and I am trusting that it has the power to see the police body camera videos. If there is in any way under the current proposed bill that the committee could be refute, could be refused, a request for viewing. A police camera videotape and I would like it uh, stipulated, they stipulated that they have this right to view them. I know this is hard for the police. I have known many good officers, great men as friends and neighbors and customers. Over many years, we have expanded what we expect of them way beyond what the job wants defined as keeping the peace. I understand family and brotherhood. Still, I believe this is essential for the city and will help the police be a better department, but it must have subpoena power. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration. This is Kristen Mo and she is in the thirty-one hundred block of North Fourth Street. Um, next one, to whom it may concern and with all due respect regarding bill eight, any proposed advisory committee must have subpoena powers. Period in capital letters. Thank you for your attention. This is Chris Gibson, thirty-two hundred block of North Fourth Street. Um. Hang on one second. Uh, next one is dear Harrisburg City Council, I have lived in the city for Harris, uh, City of Harrisburg for fifty-nine years and support bill eight twenty twenty. I live at twenty-eight hundred Croydon Road and work at three fifteen Pepper Street, Harrisburg. As a housing counselor. At the Harrisburg Center for Peace and Justice, I often interact with law enforcement officers in Harrisburg and surrounding communities. I attended the public meeting had, meeting held several months ago at the Hamilton Health Center moderated by Brandon Flood. I observed that there were many helpful comments made at that time that I suggest you take into consideration. As you go forward with the establishment of a citizen, a citizens advisory committee. Sincerely, K. Pickering. Um, next one, members of city council. I support the implementation of a ci- citizens review board of the Harrisburg Police Department that has a real oversight powers. The proposed police advisory board is too limited in the following ways. One, it lacks the subpoena power needed to enact meaningful accountability. Two, board members should be able to review police investigations with full transparency. Three, should it find the need, the board should be able to commission independent investigation. A police officer's conduct and it should have a sufficient budget allocated to do that. Our police department should have nothing to fear from the board being granted these powers. As since if they do their jobs well, none of these powers will be needed. However, the many well-publicized and many, many, many unpublicized. But still unacceptable abuses of justice by police departments across our country. Show that it is wise for us to give this board the power it needs. So I ask that you amend. The proposal in these ways and give city residents confidence that we have real protection from any police officers. Who dishonor their profession and abuse the trust they are given. Sincerely, Christopher Eby, twelve hundred block of Third Street. Um. This one is from Faith Knight, fourteen hundred um, North Second Street. She says elected members of city council, George Floyd, little did anyone know the unnecessary and brutal murder of this man would start a strong nationwide movement. Demanding change and accountability. In our city, Tyreek Riley, only twenty-one years old, died days after being beaten at Dolphin County Prison. Harrisburg citizens demand public safety institutions that are fully accountable. Fully beholden to demonstrate public democratic control and truly serve the interests of the public. Particularly the black residents of the Harrisburg who for too long have been targeted and mistreated by the police. Um, I apologize, but this one is, there was, that first part was new, but then the last, everything else is. Uh, goes into a testament to the first email that I wrote that I um, previously read. So I won't continue that one, but that first portion of it, but that was from um, Faith Knight, like I said. Um, and then we have. One from uh, Winnie O, she said, I am writing in favor of a nonpartisan citizen review board that actually has subpoena power. To call into review and hold officers accountable for complaints of misconduct. And propose alternative methods of policing and maintaining order within the community. We also need more consistent periodic updates reflecting misconduct allegations and status updates for those undergoing litigation. Take out the financial penalties from individual pensions or a self-funded third-party insurance. Don't, excuse me, don't put the burden of poor policing on the already overwhelmed tax base. Equally important, we need clear guidelines to cover how civilians can step in and assist when they observe a potentially fatal abusive situation occurring. Enact clear internal policy within the police departments that cover and encourage ethical police. Personnel to report on the workplace harassment in-house and on the field without fear of retaliation. Um, sincerely deeply concerned citizen Winnie O, and she is of the South Allison Hill resident. Um, and then there's one more um, by Paul Cannon of uh, Boish Street, Bo Street, excuse me. Um, Mayor Papenfus and elected members of city council. Um, he says, I am writing to demand public safety institutions that are fully accountable, fully beholden to them. This is again, very similar. Um, he just added a couple highlighted bullet pointed. Words, but it's again, uh, basically the same testament to the very first um. letter that I, I read, so. There were, I'm sorry, one more thing, President Williams. There was one from that we got around three o'clock, and it was from Ralph Rodriguez, if you want me to.
Yes, as well.
Okay, hang on one second. Ralph. He, Ralph Rodriguez said, hello, my name is Ralph Rodriguez, senior, and I reside on Brookwood Street in Harrisburg. I'd like to address Bill eight twenty-twenty regarding the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. I feel this is imperative for accountability and awareness to injustice in the City of Harrisburg and potentially everywhere. Having a concerned citizen advisory board can put the voices of the concerned people to the forefront in law enforcement cases that are questionable under a microscope. I feel this is vital for the evolution towards equality and away from injustice for all. Thank you.
Is that it, Ms. Houston?
There actually is two more. And then that'll be it for tonight.
Did they just come in?
No, they actually, the one came in at four oh five, and the other one came in at three forty-five. So this one is from Michaela and Joshua Moritz. And hang on one second. And they are the two-hundred block of Hamilton Street. They said, dear City Council Members, my name is Joshua Moritz, and I am a resident of Midtown Harrisburg. As a concerned citizen, I am writing in opposition of City Bill eight dash twenty-twenty to establish a Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. I do not believe that this bill does enough to protect our citizens. I am not against forming a Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, but I am against how it is presented and formulated in Bill eight of twenty-twenty. First, there is no acknowledgement in the opening clause of the bill of the actual problem. It is imperative that we name the racial injustice in our city and beyond that is causing the need for change, racial profiling, killing of black and brown people, excessive use of force, and abuse of power from our police officers. We want to start to dismantle the institutional racism that exists within our police and judicial systems as they currently exist. Second, the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee has expressed in the bill is still under the control of the mayor and police department instead of the people. The police force must be accountable to the people first, not vice versa. Therefore, the committee needs to be independent from the police, mayor, and city councils. Some of the problematic pieces of the current bill are as follows. The police commissioner would be a non-voting member of the committee. There is a requirement that committee members be appointed by the mayor and city council and easily removable by city council, and the committee does not have subpoena power. Instead of putting a Band-Aid on the problem of policing in our city, we need to have continued conversations to reimagine together what public safety could look like in Harrisburg. We need not put more resources into the vital infrastructure of our city, including education, mental health, and social workers, in order to keep all of our citizens safe and healthy. We want to be a part of a solution that includes respecting the lives of all of our citizens, but especially ones that have been the victims of generations of racism. Thank you for accepting input. Please continue to include all citizens' voices, voices in the development of the budget and proposed plans. And then the very last one was from Liam Hick. Hang on one second. Liam Hickling, Hicklin, Hicklin, excuse me. And they are the one-hundred block of Sassafa Street. And Leland Hicklin wrote, elected members of city council as tax-paying citizens who fund the Harrisburg Police Department's budget, we demand that the department hold itself fully accountable for the public whom the department swore to serve and protect. As we have seen with increasing frequency, police are ill-equipped to interact with private citizens, especially black citizens, in heightened states of emotion to de-escalate situations that could be resolved without force or to stand down even when they, at some point in their interaction, realize that they are mistaken in their approach. Instead, police far too often escalate situations, and their actions result in trauma, physical harm, and all too often, death. I personally believe that police should not interact with people who are not engaged in obvious criminal activity at all, that a person can walk down the street having committed no crime and end up dead because the police think they look suspicious is criminal. I'm tired of seeing videos of people across this country being terrorized by the police for picking up trash, for walking in their yards, for walking home, listening to music, for walking across the street for being black. And to be honest, to watch police walk into situations that any person working in or adjacent to social services recognizes involve people in emotional crises. And let's be clear, far too often, the emotional crisis does not manifest until the police show up. And to watch them create a situation that requires force by screaming, pulling weapons, using tasers, tackling people repeatedly, making demands that many times have already been, been complied with. Hands up, get on the ground, infuriates me. And to be clear, even if a crime has been committed, police do not have Cartier Blanc, Cartier Blanc powers to execute justice by murdering the perpetrator. So again, it is my belief that police should be defunded, not merely regulated, that they should be demilitarized and that their powers should be limited. Until that time, one way to show that people who pay the police's salaries, that the police will uphold their vow to serve and protect all citizens, including our black residents, is to hold them accountable for their actions. The only thing more wrenching than the trauma of watching the police's ineptitude in handling situations any social worker could resolve is watching them get away with it, time after time. Police should not have the power to police themselves. They have proven that, given this power, their tendency is to absolve accused officers of their crimes. There, there needs to be checks and balances in place to ensure that police are truly held accountable for their actions. One way to do this would be give the proposed Citizens Review Board of the Harrisburg Police Department affirmative oversight powers. This includes giving the board the power to subpoena departments affirm, wait, subpoena documents, body cam footage, and other artifacts of evidentiary value, and allow full transparency to the board as they review investigations of police conduct. The Harrisburg Police Department will no doubt oppose the idea of an external oversight committee. No entity welcomes the idea of having an external body holding them accountable. At the same time, no organization has the right to exist without being subject to external oversight because they cannot be trusted to impartially regulate, oversee, and hold themselves and their own members accountable. Harrisburg Police is no exception. The proposed advisory board, as it stands, without subpoena and oversight power, has no real power, and the citizens see the proposal for what it is, a politically cowardly way to try to placate the citizens while maintaining the good graces of the police department. We write to demand dismissal of the existing proposal and to draft and implement the proposal that citi- centers and empowers us, the citizens of Harrisburg, to have a means of truly holding the department accountable to its sworn duty. According to the City of Harrisburg's organizational chart, the government is accountable to the people. The power of the city lies first in its citizens, not the institutions that attempt to stifle legitimate concerns posed by us. The city council must take a decisive stand for democracy and take action that affirms that the people of Harrisburg, not the police, are in control of how communities are governed. And this comment is sincerely Liam Hicklin. And that is all for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Before we leave tonight, I just wanted to give you the notice of city council schedule. The work session, of course, today, and then the work session, July second, two thousand twenty, will start at five thirty P.M. Following that, we will have a legislative session, July seventh, at six thirty P.M. The legislative session will immediately follow the work session. And then, of course, council members, we will go on our city council summer hiatus. Now, our sessions will begin again, August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. So if anyone would like to submit any comments to city council during our, or during our hiatus, please email publiccomment@harrisburgpa.gov. Thank you. And after that, council members, we will adjourn the meeting for this evening. There's no-
I mean, are you sure you want to adjourn?
I am so tired, and I'm so cold. It's so cold in here. They have the air conditioner up so high. I'm freezing. I'm freezing. Any other comments or questions, council members, before we adjourn? Oh, wait a minute. Ms. Houston, is Mr. Nelson back on?
Um, no, he, he is not on. He was on for a short period, and then he left, so you may add him to next week's session.
Okay, we will add him to next week's agenda. Council members, I am adjourning this meeting at ten-ten. Everyone have a good evening.
It's nine fifty-one, by the way.
Oh, my God. Okay. Have to have them fix it. Thank you very much. Everyone have a good evening, and I'm adjourning the meeting. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.